Able to join us for the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you, mahalo. And we have one minute to go to start the meeting. Okay, everybody ready? Everybody ready? The Waihaua Whitmore Village Neighborhood Board Number Twenty-Six is called to order at seven o'clock PM on Monday, the twentieth. Starting off, we are called to order, we are gonna do our roll call of attendees. And roll call. Uh, when I call your name, please state that you're present or virtual. Uh, Crozma? Oh, you're here, okay, present. Rancher? Present. Harvest?
Present.
Online. Van Leeck? Sylvia? Present. Mendelson? Present, virtually. Thank you. Perk?
Present.
Present. Umaki? Present. Yamamoto? Present. Ishikawa? Present. Okay, that's with all board members here, thank you. Online. Thank you, everyone. At this time, we are gonna make one slight movement, um, before we begin our presentation tonight. Um, we are going to be asking our board members to take into consideration a vote to amend our agenda, to add to our agenda tonight, to include the recognition of the Lillawo High School OIA Division One Basketball Championships. All in favor to add this to tonight's agenda, please respond with, uh, with an eye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, any opposed? Okay, hearing none, this item is added to our agenda, uh, and it will follow the presentations of our Lillawo High School Valedictorians and Mighty Mule Award. Thank you, everyone, for the vote of support on that for our Lillawo students. Okay, moving on to our agenda item, we are now at agenda item number two, our first responder, monthly reports. Can I call up our fire department? Hey, HFD, not here at this time, we'll call you up if you come in later. Moving on to our police department, HPD.
Hi, good evening. My name is Lieutenant Scott Vera, I'm with the Waihaua Police Station, I'm the watch commander for the Night Watch. Go ahead and read the stats. So this covers from April eighteenth to May nineteenth of this year. There were eight auto thefts in the Waihaua area. There were four burglaries. MVCs or motor vehicle collisions were forty-eight, which is really high. Yeah, forty-eight. Um, there were thirty-five thefts. And UEMVs, which is unauthorized entry into motor vehicles, basically people breaking into your cars, there were six of them. Tip, uh, for this month is gonna be, uh, driving or safety tips due to the amount of motor vehicle collisions we had. A lot of them, most of us here drive, you guys know most of them, so this will be a reminder. But, um, wear your seatbelt. And it, um, expressed how important that is, it saves lives, we honor, I'm not gonna go and, you know, go over the necessity, by the way, wear your seatbelts. Don't use your cellphone while driving, I know that's a big one. Keep both hands on the wheel. Drive defensively. And now, um, you guys all see it, the e-bikes are all over the place. And I know in Ever Beach, they had a bad unfortunate accident there. So just be careful, you guys are driving, just watch out, they're on the, um, roadways, they're on the sidewalks and stuff, just be careful.
Okay. Thank you, Lieutenant, for, um, I just wanna give everyone, uh, to ask you to please remain, we all have, I think, the same question, so I'm gonna, um, on behalf of our board, I'm gonna ask this question, and I know that I received several emails of concern. So if you could give us an update on the situation that occurred, the fatality and shooting at the illegal gamehouse, if you can give us a brief rundown of that and what the status is moving forward, and what we can expect as a community, um, for a safer situation, for a, um, whether it's more checks or whatnot, or what can we do, if anything, to report situations like this, if you may?
Sure. So, on the night of that incident, I was actually working, so I'll share what I can, but I'd like to say first that it's an active investigation, it's still ongoing. There haven't been any arrests made, so I can't share the details, but I can share with you, um, this, so it was last week, Wednesday, May sixteenth, at around nine-thirty, we had, um, reports of gunshots in the area of Walker Avenue. There was numerous calls that came in immediately after saying that there was gunshots heard. There were people in the streets yelling, and I think one of the calls, um, related something to the fact that there was someone dead in the game room. Most of you guys are from Waihaua, in that area, there have been several game rooms, I know how frustrating it is. So this game room was a relatively new one. Our plainclothes officers were aware of it. So, when they responded, what they found was one male deceased in the doorway of that residence. There was another male found a little bit up the road, he had some gunshot wounds, and wasn't giving us much information. So of course, we called EMS or, uh, the ambulance, they took the male away. When we went into the game room to clear it, what we found there was, um, some illegal games, there was no one there. There was surveillance, um, all over the house, but most of the hard drives were yanked out and just kind of left. So, um, that's pretty much the information we had at the time. We caught our homicide detail, and they're still investigating the, like, the case, so as far as what they're doing, I'm sure they're going over what video might be in the areas surrounding businesses, trying to identify who the, um, suspects were as far as the shooting. As far as what we can expect, I know we all hear about the illegal game rooms, I know how frustrating it is because we know where they're at. We get calls, but for us to go in there and just stop it immediately is a little complicated, I'm sure some of you guys kind of understand that. We cannot just go in there, barge in on a tip, and, and start cleaning house, we gotta get probable cause, we gotta get, a justice sign-on warrant, and then we can go to the game room and conduct the investigation. It takes time, and I know it's frustrating for you guys who live in the area to see what's going on, the parking, and ultimately, uh, incident like this that's violent and it's scary for all of us, so. So if you guys do see something like this where your neighbors, someone you see down the street, a lot of traffic going in and out, please contact us, and then we'll contact our Narco Division, they will go about doing their job of sending someone in, get the reconnaissance, and then we start our mission to break down the door.
Okay, thank you very much. Um, board members, again, we do have a full agenda, but board members, um, any questions that we can keep brief, um, at this point?
Hi, as you mentioned, there's a lot of e-bikes, could you tell me what the-
Sylvia, um, we're on, we're on separate, yeah, that one's about the topic first. Any other questions from board members regarding this issue? Okay, board members, virtually? Okay. Dean or Erin?
Uh, LT said, LT said it's an ongoing, uh, investigation, so there's no comments, can be, questions can be answered.
Okay, thank you for that. Appreciate that, thank you. Okay. Then we will, um, wait for updates from you, hopefully, and then by the next meeting, if not sooner. But, okay, yeah, and then we do want you to be safe too, we want our officers to be safe, so we, we don't expect you to do anything dangerous, but, um, but I did receive calls from neighbors in that area concerned about if there's anything they should be doing.
If you see anything, like I said, high traffic through one house, it's probably gonna be a drug house or a gang, please let us know. Nine-one-one, you'd even have to tell us who you are, just call the station, we'll send in our guys.
And this is especially, um, so you folks know, HPD, that tonight we are recognizing the, um, valedictorians at Lillawo High School, so these are our outstanding students, as well as our Mighty Mule, and we're also recognizing our basketball OIA team who took their championship, so, um, it's great that, that you folks are here, that they can hear also what's going on in our community, um, as you've, you guys will all be the next generation of taking care of our community, so, um, these are things that, that come into play as we all grow up. Thank you. Okay, TJ?
Chair, I just wanted to make a comment. And while we appreciate all the work that HPD does in our community, part of us being community residents is to make use of the tools that are available to us. So if you've got a phone, Android, iPhone, smartphone, whatever, the city has a three-one-one app. Download the app, familiarize yourself with it, when situations like this one, or maybe you see a lot of traffic to a house or a particular location, use the three-one-one app to submit photos, a description including date, time, and place of what you see. Call the Narco Vice Line, HPD dot org, I'm sorry, what is your, the website, HPD dot org? HonoluluPD dot org. Again, if we don't take some responsibility for our community, when somebody like Mayor Blangiardi comes up to the town hall, or comes up to the community and says, "Oh, you guys should, uh, help HPD, what are you doing yourself?", then we can say, "We have the tools, we've used them, and are not afraid to speak up." And if you don't want to speak up by yourself, then contact one of us here on the board. Contact the station and speak up with them, because if you sit back and do nothing, then nothing will change. So remember, Narco Vice and the three-one-one app, our, our tax dollars pay for these guys, so let's make use of our tax dollars. Thank you again, officers. Thank you so much, and yes, please be safe out there, you guys.
Okay. Thank you, can we give a round of applause for our first responder? Thank you. Okay, thank you very much, moving on to our next agenda item, thank you.
Wow, you guys are done?
I apologize, I apologize, Michelle had a question for you, I apologize, my fault.
Concerning the e-bikes, what are the rules at the road?
They still have to abide by all the laws that the vehicles have to use.
So, can they ride in the middle of the street, I mean, you know, in the middle of the lane, or?
No, they have to use a lane. They have to use a lane, they can't, like, in California, they can ride in the middle of two lanes, no, they have to use only one lane.
I don't know, I mean, like, a car?
Yes.
They take the same-
Yes.
-space that cars take?
Yes. But that's the dangerous part now, guys, yeah, you guys are taking turns, you're driving, these things don't make noise, huh, like how motorcycles do at the big exhaust, you're not even gonna hear these guys. Especially sometimes as little kids, the law is sixteen and under, yeah, you cannot use it. Hey, remember that, all your little friends out there, sixteen and under, you guys cannot use it, okay? Over sixteen, you need to use a helmet, okay? Yes.
Um, Jean, go ahead.
Uh, would it help if, I don't know if it's nationwide, maybe the state can bar or limit the horsepower? Because I noticed these e-bikes, they're doing wheelies.
Yes.
And there's no way they can do a wheelie on their regular bike like that. Because they're doing a wheelie, they're going constantly going down, yeah, so maybe-
Power to make the choices on-
No, maybe we need to pass a law where we limit the horsepower of, of that device.
Yeah, we can try something like that, you're gonna have to talk to your- And if you see someone operating the bike in that manner, you call nine-one-one, send an officer, talk to that person about safety.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, go ahead, Joe.
Yeah, the forty-eight MVCs, where, are they kind of coagulated in one area, or?
They're scattered throughout, throughout. Oh, Waihaua, I checked the numbers for each part of Waihaua, there was a bunch of them in each area. But of course, California probably gonna be the biggest one, California and CAH, yeah, it's probably gonna have the biggest, uh, the most, um, MVCs, motor vehicle collisions. It's gonna be right in that area, so just be careful, guys, thank you, be patient.
Any other questions with board members? Questions, virtually?
Madam Chair?
Yes, go ahead, Dean.
Uh, we just celebrated, uh, National Police Weekend, I just wanted to say to my fellow officers in blue, brothers in blue, and to my sisters, brothers in blue, I salute each and every one of you, thank you for your service, guys, be safe out there, aloha.
Thank you, aloha.
Thanks, Dean.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, we're gonna move on to item number three on our agenda, presentation of the twenty-twenty-four Lillawo High School Valedictorians and Mighty Mule Award. Vice Chair Sylvia will be joining, uh, in the presentation, and following that, we will be recognizing the Lillawo High School OIA Division One Basketball Championships, woo-hoo, okay, so, Sylvia and Tamara?
Come on, teacher, hurry up.
While they're getting ready, I do wanna, um, ask for those who are coming up as this year's valedictorians, and, and when we do the Mighty Mule Award, please, um, state your name as clearly as you can into the microphone, and also to state what your plans are for the future, where you're gonna go, if you're gonna be traveling, uh, to, you know, another state for college, or whether you have other plans, um, to announce, okay? And your major, what you'll be looking, um, studying. So three things, your name, where you, where you plan on studying if you're going, and what your major will, will be, okay? And I think you guys are ready?
Hi, thank you, um, my name is Tamara Nakai, I am, um, one of the vice principals at Lillawo High School, um, I am on behalf of Principal Nakamoto. Um, he just lost his father-in-law last night, and, um, so his family takes precedence over, um, tonight, um, but he would really, um, like to have been here, however, um, this year, I am very happy to announce that we have thirty-eight valedictorians graduating with the class of twenty-twenty-four.
Camera adjust, please.
This is our, um, highest number of valedictorians to date, and I am, um, going to ask them to come up, state their name, what they're gonna do after high school, and, um, give them a certificate on, out of the neighborhood commission, and what they're gonna major in when they go to college. Okay, um, if you guys wanna just come up here and then state your name, and then just meet right over here, thank you. As we, we're gonna, we're gonna call your names.
Oh.
Let us, we're gonna call you, let's do that, we're gonna call them in our phone. Thank you.
Yeah, once they call your name, if you can line up, um, behind the flags, and then we'll pull you up forward to take photos after that.
Okay, um, first one, Lois Aken?
Lois Aken?
Lois Aken? Not here? Bryce Anzai?
Uh, hi, everyone, my name is Bryce Anzai, and I'll be attending UH Manoa, and with a major in environmental design.
Jonas Cabias?
Hi, I'm Jonas Cabias, and I'm gonna be studying computer science at UH Manoa.
Crystal May Cabrera?
Hi, my name is Crystal May Cabrera, I'll be attending UH Manoa, majoring in nursing.
Jasmine Leanne Kamat?
I am Jasmine Leanne Kamat, I will be attending University of Hawaii at West Oahu, and I will be majoring in anthropology.
Lindsay Chinsio?
I'm Lindsay, I'll be attending the University of Hawaii at West Oahu, and I'll be majoring in sociology.
Hayahy O'Kalani Ching? Trishel Ishni Dalinden?
Cameraman, can you please swing to the left a little? Thank you.
Landelyn Davis?
Hi, my name is Unlyn, um, in the fall, I'll be attending Washington State University, and I'll be majoring in biology.
Tristan Della?
Hi, my name is Tristan Della, and I will be attending UH Manoa, where I will be majoring in biology.
Claire Elson? Andrea Flores Cantera?
Hello, my name is Andrea Flores Cantera, and I'm attending University of South Florida, studying pharmaceutical services.
Lanis Martinez Galloza? Charina Gamboa?
Hi, my name is Trina Gamboa, I'm going to the University of Portland to study in nursing.
Ella Garcia?
Hi, I'm Ella, I'm going to the University of Texas at Austin, and I'm majoring in biology.
Jason Gonzaga?
Hi, everyone, my name is Jason, I will be attending Columbia University to study neuroscience and behavior with a concentration in public health.
Eric Hu?
Hi, my name is Eric Hu, I, I'll be attending the Oregon Institute of Technology, and I'll be studying electrical engineering.
Ryan Leclair?
Hi, my name is Ryan Leclair, I'll be attending the United States Military Academy at West Point, and I'll be studying physics.
Jessica Meilu?
I am Jessica, and I'll be attending Ulama in Salem, Oregon, and I'll be studying engineering.
Paige McLegat?
Hi, my name is Paige McLegat, I am attending Montana State University, and I will be majoring in nursing.
Lily Miguel?
Hi, my name is Lily Miguel, I'll be attending Grand Valley State University, where I'll be majoring in radiation therapy.
Zachary Miyashiro?
Hi, my name is Zachary Miyashiro, I will be attending the University of Hawaii at Manoa, and I will be studying finance and accounting.
Thanassorn Da Ubon?
Hi, everyone, I'm Thanny, and I'll be, um, attending KCC to get my dental assisting certificate.
Alexis Nakamoto?
Hi, my name is Alexis Nakamoto, and I'll be majoring in biology, uh, at San Diego State University.
Cole Northington?
Hi, my name is Cole, and I'll be attending Whitworth University in Spokane, Washington, and I'll be majoring in business with a focus in marketing.
Gian Joshua Pasqual? Cassandra Marie Pollende?
Hi, my name is Cassandra, and I'll be going UH West Oahu to study pharmacy.
Michaela Jean Pollende?
My name is Micah, and I'm going to UH West Oahu to study cybersecurity.
Avery Richardson?
Good evening, my name is Avery Richardson, and I'll be going to Leeward Community College and studying marine biology.
Kayden Rogers?
Hi, my name is Kayden Rogers, and I'll be going to Cal Poly St. Louis Abyspo to study mathematics.
Adalys Rodriguez? Carter? Sally? Saleh? Taylor Anne Tagawen?
Hi, my name is Taylor Tagawen, and I'll be attending UH Manoa to study in business.
Jade Lynn Amberly Tung Palan?
My name is Jade Lynn, I'll be attending Leeward Community College, and I hope to major in entrepreneurship.
Alexis Urutia? Logan Warman?
Hi, my name is Logan Warman, I'll be attending the University of Oregon studying psychology.
Jean Welbacher? Last but not least, Vanessa Francis Wellington?
Hello, my name is Vanessa, I will be attending St. John's University in New York and majoring in biomedical sciences.
How about another warm applause for our thirty-eight valedictorians, class of twenty-twenty-four, good job.
Oh, we can make bigger noise than that, this is being recorded, one more big applause for everyone, really loud.
Okay, and I apologize for butchering some of your names, very, very sorry.
But, everyone, if you can take your seats, because then we're gonna go into your, your, our other, um, celebration of our, oh, we did the- You have it, okay, very good, okay.
Okay, um, we would not only like to recognize the valedictorians tonight, but we'd also like to recognize, every year, um, there is one senior outstanding student, um, that, um, it reaches their full potential and does above and beyond for their four years while in high school. Um, and tonight, I'd like to recognize Eunice Oluwafisoey. She is our Mighty Mule for twenty-twenty-four.
Hello, everyone, my name is Eunice Oluwafisoey, I'll be going to Loyola University in Chicago, where I'll be double majoring in sociology and anthropology with a minor in biology on the pre-law track, thank you.
Wow. Wow, that, that was a mouthful, congratulate, one other, another round of applause for our Mighty Mule of the Year. Okay, so now, so now, if all of you, if you don't mind, you can either stand, stay, remain standing, or you can take your seat, because I'm, I'm gonna call up for our, our basketball team to get their recognition, and after that, our tradition is, we are all seeing our alma mater right after that.
Chair, before we do that, the vice VP wanted to get a group shot of everybody, so one minute, gentlemen in the blue, and next to you, come right in the middle over here.
Okay, yeah, we usually do that after, but we can do it now, we can, we can do it now, but-
And then every, everybody else?
But you wanna come in front of the flag, you guys wanna come in front of the flag.
So you're, you're gonna try to fill in, you in the middle, right here, gentleman, oh, excuse me, cum student in the gray, come over- So you're, you're gonna try to fill in. You in the middle, right here, gentleman, oh, excuse me, scum student in the gray, come over here, sir, next to him. Yep.
They should come in front of the flag.
All right, they want you guys to come in front of the flag, so we're gonna move the mic. Okay, so if you cannot see me and you're looking at somebody's shoulder or the back of somebody's neck, sir, would you and the gentleman behind you switch places? Perfect.
Come forward in front of the flag.
Okay, so you cannot hide behind the flag. Come, uh, Lalehua, Jersey, come over here on the side. Perfect. Right there, look at that. Come on this side, you go right, oh my goodness. Can we all see their smiling faces? How about a big Lalehua smile and a big round of applause for all of our Lalehua High School valedictorians?
Congratulations again. Okay, and grab your seats and then we're gonna move into our next celebration. And then we're all gonna stand up again. But what a fantastic group of, of awardees this year, fantastic. Okay, uh, Representative Prusso, you ready? At this time, on the next item on our agenda that we added by, um, by unanimous vote, we added to recognize the Lalehua High School OIA Division One Basketball Champion, so let's give a big applause and big welcome to Lalehua. Come on up, come on up. Come on up, you guys.
Well, I'll call them up.
You will?
Yes, okay. So, um, on behalf of the Hawaii State on behalf of the Hawaii State House of Representatives, I'd like to recognize the Lalehua High School Basketball Team consisting of Darian Comma Hopner Corales, Kobe Wyatt, Twain Wilson, Chason Monter, Erin Benefo, Tyree Wilson, Josiah Simbri, Zach Ranos, Tristan Stevens, Mateus Iwane, Joshua Simbri, Trayvon Washington, and Ui Muti uh for their success this season, um, not only in the regular season in which they remained undefeated until their encounter with Milani High School and they narrowly lost to Milani High School, but they came back. So, um, when they entered into the Division One Playoffs, they made it to the finals and defeated Milani in the final minutes with a three-point shot. So what we want to recognize is not just your excellence, but also your willingness to persevere and overcome and to demonstrate that capacity for all of your classmates. So I'd like to first call, um, and I'd like to recognize head coach Chad Townsend. Um, if you could come forward. So, and I'm just gonna read, um, so this is recognition and this will be, um, hopefully housed at the high school um in the front office and this will recognize head coach Chad Townsend, the players, assistant coaches, Matt Takashige, Ryan Simbri, Nate Monter, John Akuhito Landon Davis and William Broaddus, who dedicated countless hours to supporting these young student athletes and preparing them to perform to their highest potential. And um on behalf of the Hawaii State House, I am pleased to recognize both you and your team. So with the indulgence of the chair and, and thank you so much for making time for this before the students scatter for the summer. Um, we'd like to also present certificates of recognition again from the Hawaii State House of Representatives um to recognize your excellence, your perseverance, your character and your courage. And I'm going to start with um Kobe Wyatt, if you could come forward. Twain Wilson. Chason Monteri. Erin Benefo. Tyree Wilson. Josiah Simbri. Zach Ranos. Tristan Stevens. Mateus Iwane. Joshua Simbri. Trayvon Washington. Okay, and, and the rest, we will um make sure the school uh provides them with these certificates. Um, but I thank you so much, Chair and Board for your patience. Um, it's so unusual that we have an OIA champion basketball team, so um congratulations. You guys are amazing. Very impressive.
Well, hang up there. Did anybody wanna take photos of the group? What? Okay. You guys can go.
Chair, I also wanted to share, the last time Lalehua High School won an OIA basketball title, wasn't your dad the coach? Was he still the coach? No, not, not then?
Oh, yeah, I'm gonna date myself because your dad, Mr. Townsend, was my teacher. So, Mr. Richard Townsend, right? So I'm dating myself because he was my teacher.
Hey, Chad. Good seeing you, boy. Congratulations.
Okay. June, you gonna get in? Go, go ahead. Okay. Are you really good? Bigger applause and welcome to our, and stay up there, stay up there, everybody now, everybody back up. Everybody back up because we're gonna do our alma mater. Come on, everybody back up. Hey, basketball, hey. Basketball team, back up, everybody, everybody up. Everybody up in the corner, we gotta do our alma mater. That's our tradition.
Come on, guys, let's show that Lalehua mule pride. I'm not from Lalehua, but I know your alma mater, so let's hop to it.
Okay, Sylvia, you gonna be in the front? Okay. Are we good? Come on, Sylvia, you can do.
Do we have any?
Everybody ready? Are we ready? This is our alma mater, ready? Sylvia, you ready?
Oh, you're ready. Okay, ready?
One, two, three. Hail to Lalehua Alma Mater. Everybody stand up, you gotta stand up for alma mater, stand up. The joyful chorus sounded far and near. Rally round her banner. We will never fail. Lalehua Alma Mater, hail, hail.
Oh, my.
Congratulations to our basketball team, congratulations to our mighty mule, congratulations to our valedictorians, parents and families, terrific job, thank you so much. And now you guys should get home and rest. Thank you for being here. One more round of applause for them.
Thank you, Board, for having us. Um, now the seniors and basketball team has to go study for finals. Thank you.
Hey. Board members, are we ready to reconvene? Are you looking for this? Oh, I thought you were looking for this, okay. Okay, board members, we are going to get back on our agenda. What a great ceremony. Great, great um accomplishments for our valedictorians and our mighty mule and great accomplishments for our basketball team. Um, I believe the last basketball was nineteen eighty-eight, is that correct? The championship was nineteen eighty-eight, right? Yeah, so thank you for bringing us back to the floor. Thank you. Okay, bye. Say hi to your dad. Okay, um, board members and community, I do apologize, but we are going to have to rush to get through our agenda. We have three presentations um still standing by, so I'm gonna ask everyone to please cooperate and keep our questions to a minimum and our reports as well. We are now at item four on our monthly reports, Federal Military Congress Member Joe Tacuta's office.
Hi, Nicole.
And board member, community members, that was really exciting and I wanted to uh give a special congratulations to uh Ryan Leclaire uh who was recognized earlier as one of the valedictorians going to US Military Academy. She was actually nominated by Rep. Tacuta. And uh that season is coming up again in June, so just wanted to plug that for anyone with any rising seniors coming up, uh that Military Service Academy nominations will be coming back around and to start preparing for that.
Thank you. Thank you for that information.
We sent our uh a report in, right? Um, so there are a couple changes to that. The art competition was held and this past weekend, um, a student from Maui High uh won the competition, so her artwork will be displayed at the Capitol um under, in the halls. It's really a beautiful honor. Uh, the Defense Authorization and Farm Bill will be reviewed and considered this week by the committees that Rep. Tacuta is on. And then there's a list of community-funded projects uh up on the website. So if you go to tacuta.house.gov slash community project funding, uh you should be able to find that list. And if there's any questions that you want me to take back to the office, please let me know.
Thank you, Nicole. Any questions from the board? Questions from the board virtually? Questions from the community here? Questions from the community virtually, any hands? Okay, hearing none and seeing none. Thank you very much, Nicole.
Thank you.
Okay. Um, moving on to our United States Army. Thank you.
Hi, good evening, everyone. Uh, my name is Lieutenant Adam Pike. I'm gonna be taking over as the community uh relations rep from Captain Cox, who's currently uh forward in Southeast Asia, but I believe he's on standby to uh make a few comments virtually. So I just have two quick announcements and I'll turn it over to him. Uh, the US Army Garrison Hawaii is holding its next hiring fair on May twenty-first at the Aliya Manu Military Reservation Gym. Starts at eight thirty and it ends at two PM. Uh, this is open to the public. There will be job offers and provisional hiring the day of job fair. Uh, advanced applicants may go to www.himwr.com. That website again is www.hotelindiamikewhiskeyromeo.com. Um, my last announcement before I turn things over is that uh I brought some copies of the Military Training Advisory. I left them over on the table for anybody who's uh who's interested. And uh Captain Cox, if you're online.
Hi, Captain Cox, you there? Hi, Captain Cox. Could you unmute? Okay, um.
All right.
Come back. We can come, you know, we're here, so when you unmute, uh we'll check back in with you. Would that work for you?
Yeah, that would work for me.
We'll check back with you like in five minutes. We'll just move on and come back.
Okay.
Okay. Um, can I get the United States Navy coming up?
Hello, everybody. Good evening. My name is Jim Newman. I'm uh Navy Region Hawaii Public Affairs and I'll be providing your Navy update for today. Uh, Navy Region Hawaii, we have a, a weekly two-page newsletter that highlights some of the stories that the region's involved with here in Oahu and also in Kauai. I have a couple of those over there. I think I have about fourteen copies over there, but I'll be bringing this every month for the board meeting and I can provide more if needed. Hiring fairs, we host frequent hiring fairs for a variety of positions. If you're interested in the hiring fairs and when the next ones are coming up, you can go to our LinkedIn page and Facebook for more information on that. That's the Navy Region Hawaii LinkedIn and Facebook page. RIMPAC, the Biennial Rim of the Pacific Multinational Exercise starts in June, uh late June. There will be a port period with the, the participants will be in port for a couple of weeks, so we'll have different activities involved with that. So I'll be bringing you more information about that. RIMPAC is near and dear to my heart because go to the memorial several times a week. And when RIMPAC comes, we're taking these foreign nations out to the memorial. We're talking about the legacy of the memorial and the legacy, the partnerships that were established during World War Two. So very, very excited about RIMPAC and the work of RIMPAC. The Navy Closure Task Force Red Hill, NCTF, that task force held their first public open house event last week, Wednesday, at the Oahu Veterans Center. The intent of these events are to provide updates on the Red Hill Cleaning, Decommissioning, and Long-Term Environmental Remediation Process. There's more information about Red Hill Task Force and these uh open houses. You can go to the their website at www.navyclosuretaskforce.navy.mil. Uh, it was my intent to have a representative actually come and speak about the Closure Task Force to give you all an update on that. I was gonna have him come tonight. Unfortunately, he had a family emergency, so he could not make it, but Madam Chair, with your permission, next month I will have him come and I'll introduce him and then he can uh can give you an update on Red Hill and what the status is of that. And last thing, Extended Drinking Water Monitoring, the Navy is continuing extensive sampling of the Joint Base Pearl Harbor Hickam Water Distribution System uh system for an additional year. That data collected demonstrates the Navy's continuing uh drinking water that it meets the all federal and state drinking water standards, excuse me. Those results can be found at www.jbphh-safewaters.org and that's also in the report, Madam Chair, that I did send earlier uh earlier today. And pending any questions, that is my update.
Thank you, Jim. We have a question from Joe.
Uh, yeah, regarding RIMPAC, anybody new this year or somebody that hasn't been in there a while?
It's, I, uh, not that I know of, sir. It's, it's about thirty-two nations, which it typically is, but there's, as far as I know, uh the information has not come out on the details of RIMPAC, but from what I can tell, I don't think there's anybody new.
Thank you.
And Michelle?
I read recently in Civil Beat that residents of Pearl Harbor are still seeing a sheen in their water.
Yeah, so there was a uh, um. See, I have some information. Um. I'm sorry, excuse me. You know what? I'm gonna have to come back. So there was a, there were tests that were done on that and it showed that it was actually lab. It was something that was within the lab. It was not the existence of fuel in the water system, but it was something that was within the lab that was indicating that, that reading that you're talking about. I'll have to provide you with more information on it. I thought I had that information here with me, but I don't.
Yeah, um, it's an actual sheen that they're seeing, not something from, you know, the testing, but residents are seeing the sheen.
Okay.
So you can
I will, I will find out about that, and I will get back to you all.
Appreciate it.
Thank you Jim. Any other questions from board members? Questions from board members virtually? Questions from the community here? And questions from anyone participating virtually? Okay, I think we're good.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, moving on to our next item. On item 4B is Government Agencies, Board of Water Supply. Nicole, are you here virtually? Okay, we're gonna move on, but I'm gonna just jump back to see if Captain is on.
Hey everyone, can you hear me?
Oh yes, okay, coming back up.
Okay, I'm sorry about that. New system here, first time digital, but as Lieutenant Pike said, I'm currently here for it in the Philippines. Now in Malaysia, actually, I've been supporting a lot of our pathways, operations, and the 25th Infantry Division at large. We're just really thankful and want to say, you know, thank you to the community, because I know you guys put up a lot with our training, and then especially JP RC every November. But what we do every single November, and it's gonna happen again this November, it prepares us to go forward to Southeast Asia and work closely with our partners and further building that strategic partnership we have within this region. As you can imagine, it's very critical. But I did want to say thank you to every single person I've spoke to and developed a relationship with out at the board, and I don't take any of those relationships for granted. I look to all of you as my almost second, second dad and second mom. Y'all are very sweet and kind, and I hope I did the best I could in regarding bettering our relationships and doing what the community concerns to us. Obviously, there's too much work left to do, and I know Lieutenant Pike is gonna drive that ball even further. He's a very competent and strong-willed person, but I just want to say, thanks to everyone. I will be transitioning and not out of this position, but actually transitioning off of the island into another job. Otherwise, I would have never dared leave you guys earlier. But I just want to say once again, thank you. I'll be, I'll be here listening to any concerns or questions that maybe gets thrown up to the US Army, but once again, I appreciate all of you guys. Thank you.
Thank you Captain Cox, and I'm sure there was a compliment in there, but we're giggling because, I don't know if we're your mom.
They got beautiful old. No, y'all are all very young. You know, age is just a number, right?
Yeah. But anyway, I do wanna, we are behind schedule, so I'm not gonna belabor this, but I do want to let you know that tonight, because I know in the past you were interested in this, and I know you have your representative here, but tonight we did recognize the Lillah Ho High School valedictorians and mighty mule and the basketball team. We do have one student from Lillah Ho who is going to West Point, so I just wanted to, I'll give her name and information to your compadre here, because I know that in the past you folks have always wanted to meet who the West Point, you know, students going up, so I'm gonna give that information to him.
Yes, man, that would be awesome. Yeah, I did see, congratulations to her, and we look forward to hopefully answering any questions that she has on her soon-to-be career. I did have one more announcement, and this extends to everyone within the community. On Thursday, the 23rd, at 1400 at Wayan Field, it's right in front of the 25th Infantry Division Headquarters, is gonna be Third Brigade Colonel Shaw's change of command with Colonel King. And just wanted to extend an invite to everyone who wanted to attend. Both myself and Lieutenant Pike, we represent 25th Infantry Division at Large, but we are coming from Third Brigade, and that will be his change of command. I just wanted to extend that invite to the group.
Thank you very much. Okay, any questions for Captain Cox from the board here? Virtually, board members, any questions, comments?
Just a comment, Madam Chair. Thank you, sir, for your service. Be safe. Aloha.
Sir, thank you.
Any comments? Yes, go ahead June.
Lieutenant Pike, could I get your information or card or whatever you have? Because we're gonna, I guess, I'm with the Lions Club, and you're gonna, you're gonna learn who Reed Manchu is if you haven't met her already, but and because she virtually runs the the veterans parade, so. And then we've got another one coming up. I believe July is sometime about the memorial for for the 42nd, well, that's this weekend, right? But that one, but the memorial for those soldiers that passed away from World War II, right here, so.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you, everyone. Moving on to our state, our next presentation, which comes from the State Department of Transportation. It's regarding the Wahua Pedestrian Bridge Project Update from the State DOT. Our presenters tonight, joining us will be Fawn Yamada, Manager of the Right-of-Way Branch, and Henry Kennedy, Manager of the Design Branch, and this is a virtual presentation.
Good evening Chair, members of the board. Can you hear me?
Yes, you're loud and clear. Thank you.
Great. My name is Fawn Yamada. I'm here on behalf of the Highways Division Department of Transportation, and I'm here with Henry Kennedy. He's a manager, engineer for our design branch. We're gonna do a little presentation on the Wahua Pedestrian Bridge Project Update. And here's Henry, and I may I also share my screen?
Sure. So at the bottom of the screen, it should have a share button?
I see it.
You see that?
I'm trying to find the screen. Okay, I can't, it doesn't seem to show me my selection.
It could be if you look right down the middle at the bottom of your screen.
I see all the selections, but mine is not on it.
Oh, okay.
Let's try that. There we go. Can you see the? Okay.
Yep.
Sorry, I don't know that.
Okay. Thank you Chair Ishikawa for inviting us to present this project for your information. We're here tonight to provide information on the Wahua Pedestrian Bridge, Whitmore Village to Wahua. Next slide. We just want to provide some very brief project details tonight. The design build team, which consists of the contractor, Hewitt Infrastructure West, and their lead designer, Arm Tower Corporation, will be providing a public informational meeting later this year as part of the project requirements. So very brief agenda. We're just going over the purpose and need, project scope, schedule. Go to the next slide. So the purpose and need helps to define a project. It identifies an existing need and provides through its purpose how that need will be addressed. In this case, the need is to facilitate ease of access from Whitmore Village to Wahua Town, or more specifically, the Wahua Transit Center. And that is accomplished by providing an additional multimodal connection via the shared use path slash pedestrian bridge. This vision was identified in the listed long-term master and community plan shown. And those included the 1994 Wahua Town Master Plan, the proposed 2016 Central Oahu Sustainable Communities Plan, as well as the 2019 Central Oahu Transportation Plan. Next slide. So this project basically connects Whitmore Village from Whitmore Avenue to Wahua Town's Wahua Transit Center. Next slide. So the project itself provides a 12-foot wide path for pedestrians and bicycles. And it starts at Whitmore Avenue and crosses over into Wahua Town via North King Street. And along the way, there will be a bridge over Keke Stream. Next. So as you can see in the map, the pedestrian path originates on the Agribusiness Development Corporation's property line. It's inward. Next slide. It's probably a better view. It follows along the sustainable Hawaii property line to the location of the bridge, goes across Keke Stream, and it terminates on the edge of the police station property at North King Street. Next slide. So there are basically two phases to the project. The first phase includes improvements at Whitmore Avenue to just before the bridge location. That design is currently ongoing with construction slated to begin September of this year. And that construction work will run through December of next year. The second phase of the project will include the construction of the pedestrian bridge all the way to the North King Street landing area improvements. That design will begin next month and should be completed by early next year in February. The construction of that sequence would run from February of next year until January 26. Next slide. So as I mentioned, as part of this project, Hewitt Infrastructure is developing a project website to provide information to the public. Info will include ongoing construction activities, progress schedule, and contact information. Also, Hewitt will be providing three public informational meetings throughout the life of the project. One will be during the design phase of the project. Second meeting will be just prior to construction on that first phase of the construction improvements, and the final meeting will be after the start of construction. And that's it.
Thank you Henry for that presentation and update. Board members, any questions? Yes, go ahead June.
One question regarding, I don't know if anything has been done, but we've been quiet about additional security. Is that in any of the state plans? Because when we get the contractor, they're not gonna be able to talk about that, but is the state planning any additional security mitigations?
I'm not sure. I understand the additional security would be for
Well, let me give you some background. The residents of Whitmore had indicated that that route would not be safe. So if this bridge is gonna go forward, maybe we need to address some additional security mitigations concerning, especially the concerns of the Whitmore residents.
You mean for users of the bridge after it's completed?
Correct, correct.
Okay, at this time, I don't believe there's anything committed, but I can take that comment back.
Thank you.
Go ahead Michelle, and then after that will be
It's my understanding that when this was proposed, there wasn't anybody in Wahua or Whitmore that really wanted this bridge. So, and we were told, or we asked about a survey you folks had done on who was for this, and we were told we'd get results. We haven't seen any results. So who wants this bridge?
Okay. I recall one week came out a long time ago, it must have been over two years ago. And it was prior to start of the RFP, I believe. There was a survey conducted. I can see if I can find what the tally was, but you're right, the the community feedback was didn't weigh in favor of the project at that time. I do understand that this project was a legislative ask, and that's how the project came to life, and we followed through. And I'm sorry, I thought there's a third component to your question.
It was the results of the survey.
Okay. I could try and dig that up, and I'll send it through your neighborhood representative.
What's the cost of this, please?
It is 27 million for the design and construction.
Is it too late to cancel?
That's not my decision to make, sorry.
Yeah, on the second to last slide, I think it said something about land acquisition or something like that. Is there land that's being acquired, or what's the process of that?
Yes, that's correct. So there is portions of the Agribusiness Development Corporation and one other parcel owner that we need to acquire land from, or the for the path as well as the bridge.
Okay, and then Sylvia?
Yes. I didn't, I'm not clear on the exact path or route of this bridge. Can you go back to that slide where you showed it? It goes right through the agribusiness, and I know it ends up by the police station, right, on North Kane?
Yes.
With access to the transit station, but can you show that slide again? How long is the bridge over the stream? Do you have that information?
I'm sorry, I do not have that information with me, but I can find that.
And EIS has been done, right?
No, EIS was not required for this project.
We, that, but, that.
I believe we completed an EA.
Yeah.
An environmental assessment, yes.
Yeah, because that was part of this, when we had the community meeting, that issue came up. Any other from board members here? TJ?
Thank you for your presentation tonight, and let me just preface everything else that I'm gonna say with, I'm very disappointed in the DOT, because you and I, as well as Fawn, we have had multiple conversations about this project, and we expected a presentation in person. When we found out that this is actually gonna be an agenda, if you had noticed, if you've been watching the meeting, there are residents here from Whitmore that will be directly affected by this project. And they are here, and the fact that the presentation was made online, and that there is no copy, no paper copy of your PowerPoint presentation to share with the residents here is really a slap in our face. Now, you may be particularly informed about the details of this project. While we here in the community, where it's going to affect us the most, we have zero information from you folks. You can ask Fawn about all the emails that have gone back and forth, and what actually led to you folks being here tonight. So I feel like it's a waste of our time. So I feel like it's a waste of our time and probably a waste of your time because the questions and concerns that have been brought here by our neighbors from Whitmore and Wahihua will not be answered tonight because you're not prepared enough on this. Just by the questions that our board members have asked shows that you're not prepared. And we can tell you that of over the two hundred people that were in the cafeteria at Halemano Elementary, how many years ago, there was only one person that was in favor of it and that person was not even from our community and that person was not in favor of it because it was a path that was needed. But he was part of a biking club that wanted to come in and make sure that there were more biking paths for them. So I know that you're here tonight, but Chair, I really would ask strongly that the DOT come out, give some respect to the community, give some respect to what our needs are and make this presentation in person. And while QWIT is going to come out and present community meetings during the life of the project, that's just not enough.
Okay, thank you, TJ. So Henry and Fawn, I'm just gonna I'm gonna dovetail back to see if there are any other comments and then we'll come back to kind of wrap this up. So I'm just gonna go for any other comments from board members here? The board members virtually, any comments?
Madam Chair.
Okay, go ahead, Dean, and then Erin.
Once again, I urge our board members to understand that Kamehameha Highway is not only a state-funded highway, but a federal highway-funded highway. And therefore, the state is required to meet federal safety standards. There is not enough room as due to in growth in traffic to accommodate pedestrian and traffic safely on Kamehameha Highway, eating up to the bridge and out of the bridge, egress and egress. So something had to be done. So this is why this pedestrian bridge is being built. Yes, it's not wanted, but it's a safety factor. I, as a former police officer in this community, have gone to so many accidents, fatalities, including fatalities, where people have been killed between Whitmore and Wahihua because they were walking along Kamehameha Highway. So this bridge is well deserved. Whether you like it or not, you really need to understand the safety factors. You folks aren't looking at the safety factors that this is going to provide to our members of the community. So I strongly urge everyone, take a breath, look back at all the stats. Just not what you want, but what is needed. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Dean and Erin.
Hi, can you hear me okay?
Yep, go ahead.
Okay, yeah, I was just wondering, has there been any studies to figure out like how many pedestrians are anticipated to take this bridge? Like, what would be the flow of people?
Henry or Fawn, do you have a response for that?
I'm sorry, I'd have to go back and check. I don't have any sort of pedestrian counts or projected pedestrian counts.
Okay, do you know how many people use the Transit Center in Wahihua?
I'm sorry, I'm not familiar with that either.
Okay, and then I was just wondering, is there a bus route that goes from Halemano to the transit route?
There is a Whitmore shuttle.
There's a Whitmore shuttle that goes, thanks Dean, that goes directly to and then they can transfer and have alternate routes.
Yes.
And then we just don't know. Do we know the ridership of that shuttle?
That would be a sitting county act question, man.
Yeah, I think that we have to ask DTS for that.
Okay, because I'm just wondering what my questions are alluding to. I'm just wondering how how many people would use this? Like, I understand the safety issue and I do see people walking across Carson's Hot Bridge. But I'm just wondering how useful this bridge would be and how many people would actually use it versus just taking a bus that's already available. Thank you.
Thank you, Erin. And those questions actually, similar questions were asked during when we had the two community meetings. We organized one here in Wahihua at Poli Po building here, and we also organized one in Whitmore in the Jim area. So yeah, those questions were similarly asked at that time, but we can go back and and hopefully, you know, Henry can get additional information for us by looking back for some of those documents. Because we do have questions. You know, there are still outstanding questions. Okay, I'm going to come back to this side. Any Dean and Erin, you're okay right now?
Quick follow-up, if I may, just one information. The thing about the security, I believe something was mentioned because they were, they weren't going to hire a physical security guard out there at night or in the evenings. They were talking about possibly putting up a motion camera or some type of CCTV and giving the monitor into the HPD substation, Wahihua Substation. That was the thing for the security, just FYI.
Okay, thank you, Dean.
Thank you.
Chair Shikola, just a follow-up comment to what Board Member Harvest said. While there was a conversation about that, HPD is already stressed to the limits with their officers. Our district is one of the biggest districts on the island and we are also one of the districts, one of the districts that has the most openings as far as officers being able to be available for something like this. And I think what our other board member asked about the safety of the pedestrians is because that area, as we all know, because we live in this community, that area is riddled with chop shops, thieves, drug dealing, drug sales, you name it, that area has got it. And that was one of the reasons that the community did not stand behind this project because we could not be assured that we would be able to safely use a pedestrian bridge anytime of the day or night.
Yes, all of those were brought up during the community meetings, those concerns. So again, Henry, maybe between you and Fawn, you know, we can go back, but we did. All the comments you're hearing now are exactly pretty much the comments and concerns that came up at the the two community meetings we had. So there are notes on that, there are documents on that. So we'll work with you if you can get additional information for us so we can at least provide answers or at least work together on figuring out what we can do to make it safe if this is gonna if it is going to happen, I mean, if it's scheduled to happen and what we can do to make adjustments, if anything. We do, I will say very honestly and very fairly that there are existing concerns about this pedestrian bridge being built. We understand about transportation, we understand about accessibility. It's just, we don't understand very basically, we don't understand who's going to manage that bridge twenty-four hours a day because as because there are individuals who live on the bridge. You know, it's like our Carson, our Carson Thot Bridge right now. You know, people are all over the bridge, under the bridge, over the bridge, on the side of the bridge. So who's going to take care of this bridge that's going to be built between Whitmore and Wahihua twenty-four seven? Who's going to make sure that anyone who's walking over in the evening will not get threatened? You know, who's going to make sure that the kids who are going to Wahihua to you know, to walk to play a baseball game or softball game in Wahihua is not going to be threatened? So those are very simple questions, but maybe difficult to answer right now. But if we can open that discussion on how we can make this project work a little better for our community, that would be really helpful.
Understood, Chair.
Thank you.
May I ask, was it ever discussed if this could be a bridge, not just pedestrian, but for vehicles?
Already, not not vehicles, but.
No, vehicles.
No, was we we talked about, we talked about, but yeah, and it was no. Yeah, no, they, yeah, they said it was too much. It was too much. So it came up and it went away real quickly. Yeah, okay. One more question.
Has design gone far enough along that we that we know what the walkway is going to look like in the Whitmore side of it? It's a twelve-foot wide walkway, but is it fenced in or what, you know? Lights, concrete, whatever?
I think that kind of information should probably be provided by the contractor and the design team. So that that meeting should be coming up quickly.
Got it.
Thank you, Joe.
Chair Shikola, just one more question, please.
Yeah, go ahead.
So for the construction of the pedestrian bridge, whenever it does take place, do we know if there will be support beams or concrete pilings that will be put into Kiki Stream? And I don't understand why an EIS was not done and just an EA because we do have, we do have native snails and other native animals in Kiki Stream that feeds down into the estuary known as Kayaka Beach Park, Kayaka Bay. So I've asked these questions and all I've been provided with is we'll get back to you. And here we are eight months later and we still don't know how the bridge is going to go over that stream and how it's going to affect the life in Kiki Stream. I would hate to think that this is going to turn into another Red Hill Project where the water is going to be contaminated and families that depend on that waterway will be affected by somebody else's actions. I guess you can bring a response to the next meeting, too.
Well, I can tell you there will be at least two footings in the stream. That much we do know.
And will those be concrete footings with iron or concrete footings with steel? And how is that going to affect the life that's the the water life? I mean, the life that is in the water in Kiki Stream? You do know that that's a freshwater stream?
I to the best of my knowledge, there's not going to be any adverse impact to any existing species within the stream. They did the required fish and wildlife environmental studies. We put bridges across streams all over the island. I'm sure there's going to be some reinforced steel inside of the the concrete footing, but that is something that's it's not unique to this bridge. It's something that's rather typical throughout the state. With regard to the EA, it did go through an environmental review. There was a finding of no significant impact, which allows it to proceed without having to conduct more studies. So everything was was done per state law. This is a state project. So it's one hundred percent state-funded. So there's no federal nexus.
Well, at this point, I don't think it's really a matter of who's funding it. I think it's a matter of actually putting on your boots, getting into the water and looking at the plant life and the animal life that already exists in Kiki Stream, not only there where the pedestrian bridge is proposed, but also downstream in Kiki Stream. So I think you know, for what it's worth, because we as a community have been asking these questions for years now. And we've had multiple community meetings. We've had DOT come out multiple times only to dismiss the concerns that the community has. So we really would like to see something more than just a report that says no findings. What did you guys find? Because I know that there are native life, plants, and animals in Kiki Stream, and it starts near there.
Okay, thank you, TJ. So I think we do need to do a follow-up phone call to kind of organize what what documents we'd like to get copies of or just additional information. So if we can have that conversation in the in the next couple of days, I'll give you folks a call and we'll go over what our concerns are and if we can get copies of whatever documents that you may have handy for us to kind of refresh. You know, for our community so they can see and refresh everyone's minds of what we discussed previously, what came out of those studies and how we can move forward plus or minus, because of course, there's going to be some additional questions coming along the way. If that would work, okay? Okay. Well, that's what we're going to ask him. We're going to ask him for it. I don't think I don't think it's online, correct? You'll have to look for it, like if we ask for specific documents. I think Henry said that you would look for those documents, so I'll be in contact with you. Yeah, okay.
Madam Chair.
Yes, go ahead, Dean.
Thank you. This is a point of information for all. I have actually gone between my family, that some families that live in Whitmore, some families that live here and in Wahihua. And while a lot have had adverse feelings over this bridge, they do understand that it is needed. It was, it's more of a shortcut for many because it comes from the heart of Whitmore into the heart of Wahihua. On the other hand, I, as a board member, have to think of all who I speak with, those who oppose it, as well as those who have expressed appreciation for it. And we, as board members, must remember that we speak for all, not just for some, not just for me or myself and I. When I hear my fellow board members addressing our presenters, I feel a little discomfort from that because of their verbal language towards them. As you said, Madam Chair, these concerns have already all been addressed. And rhetoric gets us nowhere. So I would really wish to remind each other about Malamopono Ya Oi. We treat each other as the way we would want to be treated. We are passionate about the things we care for deeply, especially our community. None other than I, who have lived here, my family's lived here since the eighteen hundreds. But we must also look at progress and safety for our community. So I appreciate the time you've afforded me, Madam Chair. Thank you for expressing my comments.
No, and I thank you, Dean, as well, because I was about to read this. As a reminder to everyone, we have this on our agenda, if everyone gets your agenda. And it is clearly stated for the rules of decorum, all participants at this meeting shall extend the spirit of aloha to one another. There shall be no displays of disrespect to one another. Public comments can be made within the stated time limits and without interruption unless the comments are offensive and are out of order and are not conducive to civil discourse. So that is on our agenda and we we try to follow that and we usually do, but thank you very much, Dean, for your reminder as well that, you know, we do have rules of decorum at this neighborhood board. So thank you. Okay, so moving on, do we have any, we've gone through our board members. I'm going to give a quick opportunity to any participants here, if you have any questions for this project. Yes, if you can, can you, you have to come to a microphone? And if you can state your name and then your question. So Henry and Fawn, we do have a community question coming to you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is David Bobino. I was inquiring with Dean Harvest a long time ago. A concern about this project is I know the gentleman mentioned safety and I get that for the Carson Thot Bridge. But if you've walked from Mililani to Wahihua using Cam Highway, there is no safety, there's no sidewalks, there's nothing like that. So before you consider a small portion between Whitmore and Wahihua, consider for decades, for years, and like Dean said, since the eighteen hundreds, my great-great-grandfather was the Luna of Wahihua. I can tell you, you cannot walk from Whitmore, I mean, from YPO Valley to Wahihua using Cam Highway, and that's been like that forever. Let's fix that.
Thank you, David. Okay, so Henry and Fawn, it's a little bit off topic, but basically the statement was that while we're looking at, or while you're looking at a pedestrian bridge between Whitmore and Wahihua, that there's a bigger concern of there's no safe walking path on Kamehameha Highway from YPO to Wahihua. So that was in a nutshell, that's the other concern, right? Yeah. So that's another safety concern to be, to put into your book that we need to follow up on that, too. So thank you very much. Any other questions here? Okay, I'm gonna go, oh, I'm sorry. Yes, come. Sorry, we have one more question for you.
Terry Maruyama, Kirby?
Oh, there he is.
Uh, if, um, what was his name?
Henry.
Henry cannot find the results of the survey as to how many people would utilize a bridge. Shouldn't we do it again? And, you know, somehow communicate to our representative that maybe depending on depending on the survey, the bridge should move forward or not. Um, I really wonder how well utilized it will be and how many people, their property will be condemned or taken over on the Whitmore side and how many on the Wahe'aua. Would he have the answer to that? Would they be using condemnation?
Henry, so the question, there's twofold, um, twofold question for you. If you have, uh, um, the response for it. So the question is, the, if you have the, if you have the, uh, the bridge being built, will there be properties condemned on the Whitmore side and on the, on the Wahe'aua side? That's the first question. The second question would be, um, if you're not able to find the results of the surveys, would that survey be, need to be redone?
Well, I'm sure that I can find the results of the survey. I mean, often I think it was really lopsided, something in the order of 70 to a handful. Um, but I, I'm sure I can locate that data for you.
Yeah. Yeah. Okay, but the, the two community meeting, so just FYI, the two community meetings that we had here in Wahe'aua and one at Whitmore, it was 100%. Well, I can't say 100, it was one person was in favor of the bridge and everyone else, which was 110 or 11 people, uh, had said, no, not in support of the bridge. And the same thing happened at Whitmore. In fact, the Whitmore one got a little bit, um, a little bit loud, uh, it was.
I, I was at the first meeting, I, I do recall.
Yeah, you recall, yeah. So it was.
I wouldn't, if you, if you say it's 110 to two, I wouldn't, I wouldn't dispute that.
Yeah, it was, there was only one person who was in favor and that happened here in Wahe'aua and at Whitmore. So yeah, you have the good memory. So if, uh, the question again is, is, uh, whether properties on the Whitmore side.
There, there are no residential properties. There are no, um, displaces. There will be some, um, I, I believe Agribusiness Development Corp. is a quasi-state, um, entity anyway. And so, um, it'll all be agricultural or, um, some sort of corp, you know, corporation type land that's taken for the project.
Okay. Thank you. So no, no condemnation, no.
So has any, um, compensation been offered to people that will be affected? That have the farm land?
No, so what he was saying is that the, the properties that they would be, um, they could be impacting are under the ADC, the Agri, Agri Development Business. So there, it's like state property, any, anyway, I guess is what you're saying.
Because I spoke to Farmer T.
Yeah, Sibati.
Five feet from the end of his property, they're going to be digging. And it's going to erode his property and impact, uh, the farm. People will be, will be able to look into the farm area or, uh, when they cross over on the bridge.
Right.
And he might be open to.
Vandalism and stuff, yeah. So Sibati, did, did anyone contact you so far about this? Okay, so Henry, we do have another, uh, resident Whitmore, uh, resident who has a, who has a business, actually.
He's the adjacent landlord, if I'm not mistaken, but, um, I'll, I'll go back and double check. I mean, by the way, when I said there's no display, no displaces, what I'm talking about are residents. I mean, if we can't come to, um, you know, there may be a need to go through a condemnation process even for, um, business property. But I, you know, that, that's not for me to speak on. The adjacent property, I believe, is protected. We're going to put in, um, fencing.
Thing?
But I'll, I'll go back and I'll confirm that.
Okay. And we'll, and we'll get more information on our side, um, and I'll relate to you. So Sibati, I'll talk to you after the meeting. I'm sorry, you want to build a wall? So, so Henry, you may have to build a wall, but we, we will, we'll get more information from Sibati, uh, on that, because we want to make sure his property and his, um, his business is secure and safe as well so that he doesn't get vandalized and stuff. Okay.
So, okay, one more thing. All of the questions that were not answered, will this circumvent the project or there's no way to stop it?
That's a question, I'm not sure, um, we have, I'm going to be asking.
And what can we do to stop it?
Yeah.
I mean, we, the community, I think everybody, uh, doesn't know that it's going to go forward. And maybe we need to get that out there.
And that's why I scheduled this. So we hadn't heard anything for a while and that's why I scheduled this, because we needed to find out what the status was. Okay, so Henry, yeah, we giving you a follow-up after, um, sometime this week with all the questions and concerns.
Okay, thank you, Chair.
Yep, you got it. Okay, we're all good. And any other last questions? Anyone virtually? We did everyone, I didn't go virtually. Anyone virtually with a question? Okay, seeing none. Thank you, Fawn, and thank you, Henry. We'll be in contact with follow-up questions with concerns from our Wahe'aua and Whitmore communities. Thank you very much. And at this time, I do, thank you. And at this time, I do, um, without objection, I will, I'm going to skip down so that we can go to our other presentation and then we'll come back to residents' concerns. But our presentation is standing by and this is jumping down just a, a bit and we'll come back up. On item 6A, our presentation is the Hawaii State Farm Fair and our presenter tonight is Brian Miyamoto, Executive Director of the Hawaii Farm Bureau Federation. Oh, oh, I'm sorry, okay. Okay.
Point of information, Madam Chair.
Yes, go ahead.
Uh, real quickly, uh, excuse me, Brian, real quickly, uh, just, I would suggest we make, you make a, uh, request to the entire board, if nobody has any objections moving out of order. Because we would, we would have to keep this in decorum. So, uh, if you can just request, does anybody have any objections to taking it out of order? Then if nobody, it'd be good to go.
Okay, got it. Thank you, Dean. My apologies on that. Um, okay, so board members, without objection. Yeah, I did say that. Okay, you can do it.
Okay, so, um, we're good. Uh, so we're planning to see if we can skip, uh, remove the residents' concerns and community announcements after presentations of, so is there any objections that we switch this? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay, so everybody said aye over here, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dean, thank you. Okay, go ahead, um, go ahead, Brian, sorry about that.
Good evening, uh, Chair, members of the board. I'm Brian Miyamoto, Executive Director of the Hawaii Farm Bureau. Thank you for allowing me to present once again. Uh, uh, this is expanding on the April board meeting. Um, you do have a packet. Also like to thank the residents for allowing me to move up before the residents' concerns. Thank you, residents. I am not a, a resident of Wahe'aua, but I am a lifelong resident of Mililani. And it, uh, before I begin, I did want to congratulate those 38 valedictorians, West Point, Columbia, St. John's, and where I went to school, University of Oregon. I also like to congratulate the OIA Champions, uh, basketball team. It did bring me some heartburn twice as a alumni of Mililani. It hurt that, that we lost. And then secondly, the last championship, I understand, was 1988. That's the year I graduated. So I'll try to keep this quick. I know you, you've got a long agenda in front of you. Um, so I'll kind of summarize you and, and I'll go through the pages. Again, the farm fair was started in 1962. It's our 59th year. We are looking for a new home. We have been working with the state of Hawaii and, and they've identified a parcel. In fact, my understanding is they are going to be prepping it and clearing it. They did hire a contractor. Uh, we're before the, the neighborhood board and we're before the residents, um, asking for your support and, and to welcome us. Again, it's 59 years. Originally McKinley, then Loa Stadium, out at Kapale, a few years at Bishop Museum. And for the last nine years, we were out at Kualoa Ranch. Again, it's not the farm fair that many remember. Doesn't have EK Fernandez, doesn't have the midway rides and those games. It is a true agricultural fair. Uh, throughout its history, it's touched more than four generations of families. Thousands that come every year to sample local produce pro, and products, experience live farm animals, participate in demonstration workshops and hands-on activities. It's truly a hands-on, family-oriented, uh, fair. This is a single most important vehicle for promoting agriculture and the significance of agriculture to the residents and visitors to Hawaii. The goal is to educate, engage and share the importance of agriculture in Hawaii. It's our opportunity in that sector to interact with mostly locals. Again, it's, it's heavily a local event. It's not really a tourist event. We do get some, uh, some tourists and some, a lot of times the tourists are actually military uh, because they grew up in agrarian societies. They're, they're accustomed to county fairs and state fairs. Uh, again, local produce and foods interacting with live animals. It is designed to attract two groups. Our main group is the general local public, Hawaii residents, particularly families with keiki, grandparents and kupuna, also young adults and students. Keikin students have been free for the last 12 years, right? Parking has been free for the last 12 years. We just charged a nominal $5 fee for adults. We've actually even given military discounts on, on our Sundays. Uh, second, our visitors who are interested in experiencing and understanding Hawaii's multicultural, diverse agriculture industry. We're not just pineapple and sugar anymore. We still grow some pineapple, we still grow a little bit of sugar, but we are so diverse in agriculture and we want to promote that diversity. Um, it is a two-day event. Uh, we are targeting this year maybe 8,000 to 10,000. We've gone up to 15,000 at Kualoa, but because it's a new venue, we did take a hiatus last year. We're, we're trying to manage expectations. We're also very mindful of the impact that it will have to the community and with traffic. So we are working with the Department of Transportation. We do hire, um, elite parking that does, uh, our parking for us. And we do hire HPD. So HPD, I believe we have at times up to 12 with six dedicated to traffic when we're at Kualoa. So we do spend quite a bit of money to mitigate traffic. Will there be traffic? Yes, I'm not going to stand up here and say there won't be. It is a two-day, two-day event. At McKinley, it was 10 days. A Loa Stadium was seven days. It is now just a two-day event. Uh, we're in, usually a week before, we're out by midweek the following week. We did originally target July 13 and 14. It's usually the second weekend of July. However, with the delay and with still the uncertainty, we're not 100% right now. Uh, we're looking at, uh, possibly August 3rd and 4th, giving us a little bit more time to get the land ready, um, so that we can have a successful fair and address any concerns that we can foresee. Uh, so I'll go through some of the slides. I, I covered kind of the, the overview. Um, again, it's the 59th year of this partnership with the Department of Agriculture and the 4H, the, the students that raise their animals, along with a multitude, almost every other ag organization in Hawaii does participate, University of Hawaii, the College of Tropical Agriculture, all the different commodity groups. They all come out and participate at the fair. Um, so that is page two. Some of the events that we have, so, uh, on page three for the board, that is our footprint. The fairgrounds actually was only four acres at Kualoa. The parking was about seven and a half acres. Parking takes up more space than the fairgrounds. Um, the total at Kualoa Ranch was 11.5 acres. So we're looking at anywhere from 12 to 15 acres. The parcel that we, that ADC, it is their land in Whitmore, uh, Saipan Road, right along Saipan Road, so when you go into Whitmore Avenue on your left-hand side, it, it is a 25-acre parcel. But again, we've only asked for, I believe, this year 14 acres in total that they want to clear. Um, so it is a small footprint that does include traffic, uh, parking. Okay, so if you look at page four and five, slides four and five, one of the, the major activities that we have is called Keiki Farm Hands. It's where Keiki enjoy learning about how food grows on the farm and how it gets to the market in a hands-on Keiki Farm Hands activity tent. Uh, they learn about planting seeds, harvesting, how to care for farm animals. There is a life-size milking replica cow, so it's ceramic, ceramic, but it's full-size. You can milk, it is water. Um, we do have, uh, with Asagi Hatchery, one of our last remaining hatcheries, uh, chick hatchery, which incubator. So we have the chicks and, and hopefully they can see the chicks hatching out of the eggs. Uh, and then you can, like a planting area, we have hay that they can plant with. We have little gator, uh, tractors that the kids can ride on. They're not motorized, so nothing like the e-bikes, they're actually pedal power. Uh, and then we bring like macadamia nut corn and different egg products where they can actually get their hands in and they can feel what it's like, uh, to, to kind of experience a little bit of agriculture. It's our most popular tent. Um, families come in and they bring their, their keiki and they get to spend a little bit of time there. Sometimes we have contests, um, sometimes we have little giveaways. Uh, next is, so that's four and five, six and seven, and now I'll leave some copies here. Or actually I have one copy, uh, we will share, share and we'll, we'll get over the, the final, uh, presentation. Um, is our plant sale and country market. We say it's the biggest plant sale in the state. Uh, many of the, the nursery, uh, farmers are members of the Farm Bureau, but this is a huge plant sale and country market. Country market is like a little farmer's market. We get produce from across the state and we sell it at pretty much rock bottom prices. And then the plant sale, uh, we have put it, been putting it in a 60 by 200-foot tent. So it's a really big tent because that's how many plants and produce there is. And if you look at some of the slides, you can see that it's actually outdoors also because we have some plants that perform more sunlight than being in, indoors. Um, again, we think it's the biggest plant sale. Uh, we use about 15 different nurseries, uh, largest plant sales, any native plants, ornamentals, fruit trees, floral plants, vegetable plants, succulents and more. And what we also have is, uh, we've had the Eki Bana Club, kind of doing some, some decorating or some, some arrangements and the plant doctor and the master gardeners. You can come ask questions. Hey, I got this plant, here's a picture of it, I'm not sure what's going on. And that's from the university and they'll give some tips and, and let you know what, if they can diagnose it just based on what you're saying or what you're showing them. Um, our next set of slides is eight and nine. It's a 4H livestock show and auction. That's like, the, the 4H students, they raised, they've been raising their animals all year. They bring their, their steers, their lambs, their hogs, chickens and goats. Non, the caveat is, they were expecting July 13 and 14. So for this first year, we may not have the full auction and the show because they scheduled to raise their animals to show at a certain date. So we're working on, I'm actually on the 4H board and we're seeing if, if they need to go ahead forward, we'll support the, a smaller event. And then at the farm fair, uh, if some of those animals, uh, are still available, we like to have them there. We've done it one year where we worked with, uh, uh, another organization that brought in some animals. Uh, our ranch can bring in some animals. And again, uh, we have veterinarians, we have the college, we make sure, we understand, nobody wants wild animals running around. No one wants six animals. Uh, we have all the safety precautions as part of an insurance that we need to carry with our carrier to make sure that we, we have all these protocols. Uh, the next set of slides, uh, page 10 and 11 is our Bi-Local It Matters Education Tent. Uh, that's basically our tent that has all supporting organizations, either doing demonstrations, giving out some information or even some of our, uh, ag organizations that are selling some of their products. So it includes exhibits on ag-related topics such as invasive species and alien pests, which is really top of mind right now. Aquaculture in Hawaii, different farming methods, how to select produce, new products and produce in Hawaii, value-added things that people bring, also sampling of things like coffee, butter, milk, beef, greens, tomatoes and beans, things that we've had in the past. So this is our education tent. It's basically our display tent. If you've gone to different fairs, you see that tent. And then we have on, on slide 10, page 10, our food booths. Uh, what we normally have is the farmer's market vendors. So Farm Bureau has farmer's markets, a KCC, a big one, the Blaisdell, Kailua Town Center, and my apologies, Sunday, Mililani High School, my alma mater. So we try to get some of those vendors that are supporting local agriculture there, but we also encourage and invite community groups that are fundraising for our purpose. So we would, we would give priority to Wahe'aua and Whitmore, uh, groups that want to come in as nonprofits and NGOs to try to raise some money, uh, for whatever activities that they want to, to, to utilize. Uh, and. Uh, and and I did mention last time, we do partner with four H and FFA. So absolutely, I did have some early conversations with with uh uh Jackie Freitas on getting the Wahi, the Lelehua students more involved. And seeing if they can do things to to support. They usually work in the keiki tent, but also providing some some financial donations to them to help their programs also. Uh, and then us, we do have a main stage where people can eat, but we also have contests. And again, ag-related. Corn husking, watermelon eating. And I think I talked about this one chili pepper, local chili pepper eating contest that we do require waivers for. So again, we targeted after agriculture. We have entertainment. We usually get a DJ from a radio station that does some entertainment and different things. Uh, we've had um cooking competitions with the city, the mayor versus the fire department. Um, and community uh entertainment. If if there's something in a community, somebody wants to go up and and do some entertainment, we we absolutely invite the community. We want to engage ourselves in the community. Uh, and then we did have a small equipment extra, basically displaying tractors and other things, equipment that farmers, connecting farmers with some of those uh those distributors. And then again, the last page is the the layout of the three different areas that the state had identified as potential sites for us. It looks like site two is their location that they want us to um have the fair in. Uh, again, minimal infrastructure. When we go into Kualoa Ranch, if we're in the Kualoa Ranch, Kamamei Highway, there's nothing there, an empty field. We bring in, we did some minor irrigation just so that we can have some some water to water our plants and for the animals. And and we installed that ourselves and it's it's just PVC pipes that go underground. Uh, we put up temporary fencing uh with safety systems. We do work with safety systems on some some minor road alterations. So we do need to work with the state and the city. Whoever owns the road to to again, address traffic. Um, and everything else we just bring in. And we go out. Our our goal is to make sure that we leave the property in the same condition that we came in, if not better condition. And we, i- if need be, we'll do mitigation. We we again have, you know, uh Hawaiian earth, all of our, although our partners in agriculture will step up and help if need be, if to do some mitigation. We don't want to damage any of that, and it is state land. So we want to make sure that we are responsible guests onto the property. Other than that, Madam Chair, that is my brief uh presentation. I know time is a little tight, but I'm I'm here. Um, I'm here to answer some questions and um I did hear what Captain Cox said uh about being fair with your moms. You more like my sisters and brothers.
Aw.
Not even aunties, sisters and brothers.
That was a giggle. Um, okay, questions from the board, Joe?
First, first of all, what were the dates that you guys are looking at now?
August third and fourth.
This, this is actually a good opportunity to highlight Lelehua High School's programs, along with the Value Added Product Development Center. Um, not sure where they would fit into food booths or whatever, but um it's a good opportunity for for Wahiwa students and industry.
Absolutely. I think that's why this is an ideal location. Again, I talked about last time, the rich history of agriculture that these communities have. Uh, with Wahiwa, with just the the amazing work that Lelehua High School is doing. One of the only schools that, the only school that is allowed to actually sell their produce in the cafeterias. Most schools aren't allowed from a food safety standpoint. So if you've got a teacher here, teacher of the year, who is so engaged and 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 so committed to agriculture. That absolutely, again, we're in, we're in your backyard. We're in your neighborhood. We we encourage any input that can make the fair a better event. And again, with the mindset of this is your community and how can we promote this community also um and support all of you, support Wahiwa. Whitmore, again, I'm a proud Central Oahu resident. But I only moved there nineteen seventy. Central Oahu, you know, when I say Wahiwa, yeah? Went to Wheeler Intermediate School. I was just telling somebody, growing up in Millilani in nineteen seventy-eight, didn't, we only had McDonald's. So if we wanted to eat, we would have to come to, not have to, we would love to come to Wahiwa. So I understand. I believe I understand the community. Uh, my parents still live in Millilani. Most of my friends' families still live in Millilani. Many of them are now in Maoka. So um, I I do understand trying to preserve the country. I consider Wahiwa, Millilani, still country.
But you call it Central Oahu now.
Central Oahu.
Okay, but I'm glad you reached out to Jackie at our at Lelehua High School because she is fantastic and would be a great contact. But anyway, um, go ahead.
I loved the farm fair growing up because I grew up in town. And so that was my only chance to get by farm animals and stuff. So I I thought it was great. Um, my question is, is the attendance, is it really good, high attendance now? And um, didn't the carnival rides and stuff help bring more people in? And so is that a consideration?
Yes, um, a- again, it's a different fair. Our board had taken position that, you know, when we were in Kapole, it was like the fiftieth state fair west. And we would notice that many of the attendees were coming for the carnival. So we as an organization made a made a a decision that we're going to make it a true agricultural fair, more of a festival now. Um, we do have some rides. We were working with uh one of the small, oh, unfortunately COVID took them off. I forgot, extreme fund rentals. Bouncers and really kiddy-kiddy rides. And so we understood we needed some some entertainment, some other entertainment for for the keiki. Um, would it bring in more people? Quite possibly. But from our organization's point of view, it may not bring the demographic that we're looking for. We we don't necessarily, we support our keiki, we support our teens, our pre-teens. Um, but we noticed that was the ones coming for, they're coming for the carnival. And on top of uh the fiftieth state fair, because we're actually at the end of the fiftieth state fair, we're right after, you know, there's a little bit of fatigue from the carnival. You've got six, five, six weeks of the carnival of the fiftieth state fair. So we wanted to offer something different, something more unique. And that's what we believe the state farm fair is. As far as attendance, uh, when we moved over to Bishop Museum, it's two days. The first year, we were overwhelmed. We weren't sure what, how was it going to be received because it was a different fair. Every year in Kualoa, we saw an increase because people were talking and and they got familiar and understood better what the event truly was, was a true ag event. Um, sometimes we did have dinosaurs because it was Kualoa Ranch, so they offered a little bit different angle. But again, it was an agricultural fair. It was something, it was hands-on. You got to see the animals. It reminded folks of McKinley, where there were a lot of animals, right? Where the animals that you would maybe not see all the time and be able to get that close to the animals. And actually witness the auction that that they they hold. Have these agriculture, corn husking. Uh, we have a pie eating contest, not as fast as you can eat the pie. We actually put fruits, local fruits in the pie. You got to get the local fruits. You want to eat the whipped cream? Go ahead. We're using metal gold. So again, we try to have that full local ag component to it. So is it less than what it was at McKinley? Absolutely. Less than Kapole? Absolutely. What we're looking at is something like Bishop managing it, but as we continue and hopefully continue here, it can grow. Again, managing traffic, managing some of the concerns. But growing it to this is a a big fair. Met with HTA today, not really talking about this, uh, but we're talking about a lot more partnerships. Again, we welcome visitors to come and witness what's going on. Um, you know, hopefully as we're coming through, stop at Wahiwa. Uh, stop at some of those businesses, come to the fair because everybody goes to the North Shore and pretty much everybody passes through uh on Kamama Highway, Kamamei Highway. So we're hoping for these two days, come and learn what we do in agriculture in Hawaii. Support small businesses, support agriculture, and we'll keep it manageable.
Okay, um, do you need a question? And then um we're going to go to virtual.
I I think the key would be the traffic mitigation, which you're not even, well, you're not ready to present that, right? So um, suggestion, I don't know if you want to do option one. Because that requires people to drive through Whitmore Village. And the whole reason why that San Pan Road was built was where the uh NC Tam people didn't have to drive through Whitmore. So I don't know if you want to do option one.
Yeah, they already.
Yeah, so I mean, I, I all I'm saying is I don't know if you even wanted to consider that because of the, because of the traffic. It's, and that's the reason why the, when they did the NC Tam uh road, it was made specially where they didn't have to drive through Whitmore. And then um, did you um ever consider special buses? For for the event? I I know there's a shuttle from uh Wahiwa to to Whitmore, but uh, you know, special buses might help. And then um I I know Joel mentioned the Value Added Center. They did have a fairly big-sized tent at the uh Pineapple Festival up here. So you definitely want to get the value added. In 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 fact, I don't know if they want to conduct tours during that weekend at the Wahiwa site. You may want to talk to them about that. And that's all I got.
Thank, thank you, memory alma mater. Uh, so let me answer, answer a couple of questions. Uh, so first of all, traffic, we are working with the U UH CDC. So I I think you've heard them and and other projects and then get to help design what's the best situation. So as far as traffic, our plan with with site two. So option one, again, as we looked at these different sites, we wanted to avoid going through Whitmore Village. We wanted to mitigate. We didn't want the traffic going through. So what we're trying to do with with option two is to move the parking in, to get people off of Kamamei Highway, off of Whitmore Avenue and get them onto our lot. So we are working with CDC and as I said, also with the State Department of Transportation. And they're looking at another access point out of Kamamei Highway through ADC's property as another means of coming in and doing the best as we can as far as outreach to the community to come, not just through Wahiwa, but to come through Wilekina, right? And then you'll have people coming up also. So we're 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 going to do our best to to communicate. Um, as far as buses, we did do that at Bishop Museum. Bishop Museum, if you look at Bishop Museum, not a lot of parking. We use actually valet parking, not elite to just do the parking and actually that which just, it was a nightmare the first year. Um, we heard from the residents. Um, and so we use, I think it was Kalakaua Middle School as a satellite parking slot and we would bus folks back and forth and have shuttles going back and forth. That was part of the fair. So again, great suggestion, uh, something to consider for for us. As far as the value added, I love your suggestion of possibly um uh uh doing a tour of that facility. Uh, just for some context, I I did go up to Portland and did meet with with Mr. Bailey when he was still up in Oregon. And we're glad to have him here as as your manager for your facility. But I think that's a, that's a great um uh suggestion and not to bring up a sour spot. But when that, if that bridge is completed, I believe it goes right across from the fair. So that might be an option in in a couple of years if that ends up. I- 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 if if that enough to happen, it's in a couple of years. Uh, no bridge. So I hope that answered some of your question. Great suggestions also.
Go ahead, Matt.
So you didn't start clearing the land yet, right? Or like site two? Because just my concern when you clear it, if you're going to be using, you know, excavators or bulldozers, then it's just going to be a lot of red dirt. And then if it rains, it's just going to be mud. So.
So uh member Kirk, that's above my pay grade. That is through ADC. My understanding is they did set on RFP. And that they selected a contractor. So I again, I am I am hopeful and I trust that the considerations to the environment, to the neighborhood will be made to mitigate, to minimize. And that's also why we as an organization had suggested that we push the date back because we hate to just have the land that's cleared that is just dirt. If it happens to rain, or as you said, if it's just dirt with the amount of cars coming through and amount of foot traffic. So we want enough time to put in some grass to make sure that that we are preventing any of those circumstances and to mitigate any runoff or any impact really to the community and to our environment. So um, they are targeting, I believe, uh, the last communication I had was to complete the work. I have not seen the RFP. I'm not sure what the scope is. That's something we did say that we wanted grassed down um July first. The reason which which they thought may give us enough time for the second week of July, we said it wouldn't. Because of that issue specifically, we wanted to make sure that we did the best that we could to um avoid any negative impacts.
Yeah, that's a good, go ahead TJ.
Uh, thanks, Brian, for um fabulous presentation. And the last one that I went to, took my grandson to the one at Kualoa. It was fabulous. It was great, little sprinkle, but everything was well organized. So I just had a a couple of comments. Parking, you might also want to look at um using either, I think Waho Middle School. They've done it before with other special events. I know because I live right there. But um Waho Middle School might also be an alternative. And another option would be coordinating with uh Roger Morton and the Department of Transportation at the city level to alter their bus schedules for this particular event because I do know that they altered the rail schedule for graduation and for something else that just happened. I think uh uh, maybe it was a President's Day Aloha Run or something. And then um, I wanted to know. The Punahoe Carnival had an issue with uh, not CRB, but there were
Little fire ants.
Little fire ants, right. So that being known, and you also know about this beautiful CRB that has come in and inhabited our Ina. Are you folks going to have things in place to help keep that to a minimum?
Thank you. Thank you TJ. Thank you for those questions. And I'm I'm glad your experience at Kualoa was a positive one and we hope to replicate that here. Uh, so your first uh question or statement, Wahiwa Middle School, again, we are open to 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 as many options and we look towards not just the neighborhood board, but to the community. Any suggestions that you may have, we are open to input. Uh, to make this as successful as we possibly can. And we'd love to work with the different schools, different properties that can accommodate um uh parking and and residents. Again, our policy has been free parking, so we're not charging for parking or anything. That may change. And maybe in the past, at Kapole, we actually had the community. And I I think the board chair at that point made a tinsen and her group, and they kept a hundred percent of the parking proceeds. We provided everything. They made, quite frankly, my understanding is they made more money than we did. That's at the Farm Bureau. Because of parking, they made quite a bit on the parking. Uh, second, your suggestion on city DOT, absolutely. We do work again with state and city. Um, that's something, a request that we we can make. Uh, uh, again, anything to make it run a lot smoother. Um, the, I did hear news about the the rail. Um, so that would be something that we would look into. And then finally, I think most importantly, a little fire ant and coconut rhinoceros beetle, you guys haven't really been impacted by the little fire ant here as much as Winford Oahu. Coconut rhinoceros beetle is all over the place and it's changing the landscape. So the Hawaii Farm Bureau, this year, our number one bill, we introduce a a a series of legislation that's part of what we do. Uh, half the year or a third of the years, we're at the state Capitol lobbying for farmers and ranchers trying to help them. Our number one bill wasn't invasive species bills. The one you saw on the news, the twenty million dollars in addition to what they normally get. There is little fire money in there. There is coconut rhinoceros beetle there. And in fact, on Thursday, I'm meeting with the Hawaiian basis species council and the deputy at the Department of Agriculture. We are uh involved, to say the least, in invasive species. That's partially our role. We, we believe the Department of Agriculture is a tip of the spear. They should be in charge of invasive species. We are disappointed at where we are as far as invasive species. I will say that it is an emergency right now. It is an emergency in invasive species and we need, and we're glad the legislature to include uh Representative uh Prusso, Senator De La Cruz was instrumental in getting that funding along with his counterpart, Representative Yamashita. Twenty million dollars is unheard of. Especially in light of Lahaina. That's on top of what they normally do. And in the budget was another six million dollars. So almost thirty million dollars extra to address this emergency. You guys don't want these pests here. The uh the coconut rhinoceros beetle, not only coconuts, change the landscape of Hawaii, looks like. Bananas, sugarcane, pineapple, laualla, calo. They attack a lot of things. These are bugs that are just looking for sugar. So um, we are trying to address it as a state, as a farm bureau. It is probably right now one of our top priorities. So absolutely, we work with Citar. We work the Department of Agriculture. We'll make sure that those inspectors did what they did at at Puno. And if it is found, we will not allow it to be sold. And we'll be proactive with who we engage with as far as those nurseries that are coming in. The last thing we want to do is bring little fire ants into your community. So we will do everything we need to.
That was uh, hold on, hold on. It's any other questions from our board? Okay, virtually, any questions from Dean or Aaron? Okay, okay, go ahead now. Go ahead, coming. Hi Noel, I'm sorry to Noel. That mic isn't working. Can you, yeah, come.
Her question was, will there be an invasive species table at the farm fair? They are always invited. Every event we do, we do a TJ has seen it, Ag at the Capitol. They have a presence. There's several different groups. Kristi Martin is with Sea Gaps. There's also the Hawaii Ant Lab. There's also on Oahu, the Oahu Invasive Species Committee, Maui Invasive Committee, Kauai and Hoi Island. And there's also the state entity, Hawaii Invasive Species Council, as well as the Department of Agriculture is always there. They bring their plant quarantine. They have, you know, the, uh, sometimes a snake or the piranha, the different things that they're showing you folks. You shouldn't have any of this stuff. So that's the question a long way. Absolutely, they will be invited. Department of Ag always shows up. The others, it's up to them. We will highly encourage them and we'll make it a point that they know that this community wants them there to ask them questions.
Thank you very much. And we're going a little bit off topic here. We're going, sorry, running behind schedule a little bit. So I'm going to wrap this up. Let me go back virtually. Anyone with questions virtually? Okay, thank you very much, Brian. Thank you for this information and you'll be in contact with us as you move forward and finalize so that we can. I just want to say one last thing. I do want to, I want, I want to ask it that you can ensure us that at some point you will give notices out to the community in Whitmore about this event and what the traffic situation directional or otherwise will be in, you know, ahead of time so that people are not surprised that, you know, if they have to take their kids to a game or something and they can't get out of Whitmore because there's traffic, you know, or there's no directional traffic. So I just want to get some guarantee from you that that messaging will get out to the Whitmore and Waihaua community, but especially the Whitmore community, that there's an event coming and these are going to be the roadways or these are going to be the directional that's going to be happening that day. If we can get that assurance from you.
Madam Chair, you have our promise. We will, we will continue to work with this board, with the community. And if so requested, we'll come back with an update, maybe not next month, maybe what is next month, June, July? Let's still give us some time. It'd be pretty quick. So if we have more information next month and a better plan as far as the traffic, we will come back, but we will reach out to the community. I'm thinking, you know, canvas the community. We do put up the big road signs, the electronic billboards to let them know it'll be in two weeks. It'll be next week and then it'll be this week. So we, we do contract with Safety Systems. I'll be, but because it's a new event, we do, um, do advertising. TV, we've, we've done some, so if there's a, a, a local paper that you folks have here also, we will buy advertising there and we'll do what we can to let the community know. And if we're allowed to put up banners and stuff that can even go up earlier in the community, especially Whitmore, we will do that. So we work with the community. We'll work with the neighborhood board to see what we're able to do and we'll do as much as we can. You have my promise on that.
We appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Board members.
Okay, without objection, I, without objection, I would like to go back up to our residents' concern. Any objections? Virtually any objections? From Dean or Aaron? We're going to go back on our agenda to do residents' concerns. Okay, here at the community, any residents' concerns or community announcements?
Chair, just one announcement.
Yes, go ahead.
Um, so if you are not doing anything this coming Saturday at nine o'clock, that is May 25th, the Waihaua Lions Club and the North Shore Chamber of Commerce will be hosting a Memorial Day celebration at the Veterans Monument at Haleeva Park. Please come down and join us as most of you may know, and for those of you that don't, all of the names that have been inputted on that Veterans Monument are names of residents of the area that have given of their lives in a few of the wars that we've had. So come down, North Shore Chamber of Commerce and the Waihaua Lions Club again at nine o'clock this Saturday.
Thank you TJ. And it is a beautiful ceremony. Any other residents' concerns locally here?
Chair, just one more, one more recognition, please. We have Roger here from ADC and I want to tip my hat to you, Roger, and to Wendy at ADC because the work that you folks have been doing in our community, especially in the area of Whitmore, to reach out to our homeless encampments have been fabulous. And just so you know, one of the, um, one of the persons that you folks reached out to has actually been reunited with her family. And I want to say thank you very much for the work that you guys are doing. And we hope that this continues for many, 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 many more moons. So thank you, Roger, and to ADC. We love the work that you guys are doing.
And I think Wendy is going to be at our meeting next month. I think, I think she's scheduled, right? Yeah, thank you. I have her on my schedule. Okay, virtually, any questions or comments for residents' concerns? That one? Hi Naomi. Did you have an announcement to make, a community announcement or community concern?
Yes. Hi, um, good, you, okay, sorry. Hi, good evening, everyone. My name's Naomi Blue Summers. I'm representing the Waihaua Value Added Product Development Center. Thank you for mentioning us in Brian's presentation just now. And Brian, we would love to get involved in the farm fair. So Chris and I will definitely be talking to you about that. But I wanted to just jump on real fast and let everyone know that this Thursday, May 23rd, we're going to be hosting a webinar on high-pressure processing. So this is a technology that can help extend shelf life of foods. So that opens up commercialization opportunities, including export for food businesses. And at the Value Added Center, we have the first high-pressure processing machine in the state of Hawaii. So the webinar this Thursday is going to be from 10 a.m. to 11:30 a.m. The registration link is on our website, so I'll drop that link into the chat. And on the webinar, we'll have some industry experts from Hyperbaric, which is the equipment manufacturer. And we'll also have Chris Bailey, our center manager, as well as Ethan West, who is the co-founder of Pico Provisions. And there's going to be plenty of time for question and answer. And then also wanted to let everybody know that next week, Thursday, we're having another event, which will be in person at the center from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. We're expecting approximately 100 attendees. And this event is the culminating event of a Leeward Community College workforce development program for food entrepreneurs. So we will be managing the traffic and, or the parking, having everybody park in our parking lot. But just wanted to let everyone know that this event is going to be happening next week, Thursday. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Naomi. Any other, anyone else with other announcements? Thank you, Naomi. Okay, coming back to community in Waihaua, we're back on our agenda. So we're at item seven, elected officials, mayor's representative. Kevin, are you on?
Hello, Chair. I'm good, Chair, can you hear me?
Yes, you're, thank you.
Great, sorry, not there in person today. I've got the flu, so I didn't want to infect folks. But just quickly, this month's highlights from the mayor's newsletters. There's an update on major improvements in the Department of Planning and Permitting. There's details on the city's annual sustainability report, which was published on Earth Day. The project to remove the Haiku stairs is officially underway. And how to protect your family from wildfires, because it's wildfire awareness month. The mayor's May edition of the newsletter can be found online at honolulu.gov backslash mayor backslash newsletter. Couple of announcements, excuse me. The Department of Parks and Recreation is requesting the community's help to meet our goal of gathering 38,000 lei to adorn the graves of the National Memorial Cemetery of the Pacific as part of the Memorial Day service on Monday, May 27th. Most of the lei-making opportunities are on Friday, May 24th, and there's various locations across the city. Making and donating lei, you know, where to find those locations can be found on honolulu.gov. The Department of Parks and Recreation is also still has a number of job openings within the summer fun program. These jobs are an excellent way to gain experience in the childcare field while earning a minimum of $16 an hour in a dynamic work environment. And there are dozens of program sites around Oahu. For more information, please visit bit.ly backslash summer fun job. There were a couple of questions from the March 18th meeting regarding Rose Street and Loco Drive. I know it's been a while since we last visited that. I think the questions were, what are the studies or methods aside from reviewing the collision data? And if the study is completed, we're conducting during the summer, can studies be conducted before and after school, during the school year when the students are in school? The Department of Transportation Services responded that in addition to reviewing the traffic collision data, DTS conducts a traffic survey, which provides traffic volume and speed data. The study is conducted over a 24-hour period. It normally is taken in the middle of the week. They also conduct site investigations to obtain roadway attributes and check if existing traffic controls are appropriate and in working condition. The two studies for Loco Drive and Rose Street, they confirmed were taken during this period when the school was in session. So I don't know if we want to have, I know that this has been an ongoing discussion. I don't know if we, if there's further follow-up required, but just let us know and we can reach out to DTS. With respect to the Waihaua skate park improvements, the DPR Maintenance Supervisor inspected the skate park on March 27th. Work orders to repair some of the affected areas were submitted on the same day. Then an onsite meeting was scheduled for April 22nd, 2004 with the Maintenance Support Services to discuss implementing those improvements to the skate park. I also know that there's been ongoing discussions with the mayor chief, mayor's chief of staff, Andy Sugg, and some of the community members regarding maybe upgrades to that park or replacing it or making it larger. And I think the most important news as a result of the takeaway from, you know, our visit, the mayor's visit for the town hall in Waihaua was the California and Avocado Street Buildings. The Deputy Managing Director Krishna Jerem and, and Chief of Staff Andy Sugg and DPP officials and HPH, HPDD, HPT met with the homeowner, I think at least three times now, the building owner, at least three times. And I know that they were onsite with Don from DPP, the director of DPP was out there about a week ago. And they're issuing violation notices. And if the violation notices aren't met, the intention is to take the buildings down. So that's, they've been, it's just big on the mayor's list and a big takeaway for him when he, when he, after the town hall meeting. So I know the notice has gone out to the, uh, the building owner because that was discussed at the cabinet meeting last Wednesday. I think it's a seven or a 10-day notice period. And then the city will be taking action immediately thereafter if the, if the building owner does not. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you very much. So I'm glad you brought up that. I'm sorry, we have a.
So we have a.
Oh, Kevin, is your, on your side?
On your side?
I'm sorry, Chair?
There's an echo.
There's an echo.
Oh, it may be me. Is it, if I, if I mute, is it still there?
Is it? Hello? Check, check one. Okay, that's good. I, I wanted to say thank you for bringing the update on regarding Avocado Street because number one, you're, I have heard that, that people have been out there. So I'm assuming that's was the city staff. But those individuals, I actually went there with a couple of other people. So I had a bunch of people actually, and they refused to move. You're, you're absolutely right. You know, we asked him, oh, we heard that, you know, da-da-da. And they're like, so what? Basically was the attitude. They, and behind the current buildings, they're constructing like a tile wall or some kind of concrete building is in the back. It's built with, so I'm not sure what that's coming up for. But they are building something behind one of the dilapidated buildings there. So I'm glad that you folks are following up and, and citing so that can be addressed because that is truly a, a dangerous situation of people hanging out there and riding their bikes and doing whatever it is. But a lot of people who live right in that area are getting very, very concerned. Not only because of, of the number of people are in that area now, but also because of the recent shootings that happen in that area. Number two is, there's also another facility that I went to go check on this past week and it's at 123 Mango Street. It's a cross of dots. But that building, that facility was last held or operated by Achieve Zero. Achieve Zero is no longer in existence and that facility has now been taken over. So there are multiple people there with multiple mattresses and all kinds of things. So that has to be addressed as well. HPD, I already contacted them. They've gone several times to clear out the area, but they do need whoever owns that property that needs to be addressed. And, and those individuals also need to stop building their encampments there. So if you can add that to your list, 123 Mango Street, so that, so that, yeah, the residents in that area can feel safe again.
Absolutely, Chair. We'll follow up on that. And I think you're going to see some aggressive action on avocado in, in California. The mayor was outraged when he went to visit the site.
Thank you very much. We appreciate that and really our thanks to the mayor for addressing that as well. Thank you. I'm going to go to our board members. Any other questions, board members? Yes, go ahead, June.
Future consideration, if the pedestrian bridge comes up and if they start using more bicycles, I think the transit center may, may need more bike racks. I think all, there's only one that I've seen. There might be two now, but that's not enough if people are going to use, actually use that bridge. And then I know, I know, I know that Kane Street is already bike, has a bike path on it too. So I, I don't know if it's going to be extended all the way up to the police station a little further. I guess up to the bridge is a thought. Okay, that's all, but that's the future thing. Thank you.
Thank you, June. And we do, we are already at 9:30, everyone. So we am, I am going to rush through this. Any other emergency, not emergency, but urgent?
Chair, actually, just one question. Thanks, Kevin. I hope you're feeling better soon. I wanted to ask, would you be able to come back and let us know what exactly is going on with the Achieve Zero dissolution? If that is something that is going to come under the purview of the county or if the state will be handling that? Because I do understand that they had assets at their office on Palm Street.
Sure, well, we'll follow up on that tomorrow. Thank you for that question.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions from board members? Okay, virtually, Dean or Aaron, any questions?
Madam Chair.
Yes, quick one.
Evening, sir. Just a quick note, if the city does move in to demolish the buildings, it is our plan, it is the city's plan to build the property under for the removal of those buildings. I hope it is. And secondly, I know DoCare from DLNR was looking at purchasing the property to put an substation for their DoCare officers there. If you could check and see what's going on with that because they were looking at working it in with the freshwater park. Thank you, sir.
That's a good point.
We can follow up on that. Thank you.
Okay, any other questions virtually from board members? Okay, coming back here, any questions from the community here? Yes, go ahead. Standby, Kevin.
Hi Kevin, Warren here. I just want to tell you, thank you for directing me to the mayor's town hall. And thank you to the mayor and Dr. Ireland and Jonathan, the court team. And North Shore Mental Health is going way above and beyond to take care of my brother that was houseless. Thank you so much.
Kevin, did you hear that?
We did. Thank you very much, Warren.
Thank you. Thank you for sharing that, that worked out. Okay, virtually, any comments or questions for mayor's office? Okay, seeing none. Thank you very much, Kevin. Please take care.
Mahalo.
On our next one would be council member Wire, Matt Wire. Oh, Kelly?
Aloha, Chair. Can you guys hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, great. Thank you so much for having me. Kelly Anaya from Councilmember Matt Wire's office. Just a couple of quick things. Councilmember was how to be a part of the Lions Club recognition of the first responders again. He attended the event last week, Wednesday, to present certificates to the HPD, HFD, military police, and ocean safety and EMS first responders of the year. Also, last week, Wednesday, the council adopted Resolution 24-103, which approves the mayor's executive reorganization authority to establish a standalone ocean safety department. Likewise, Resolution 24-50, which puts on the 2024 general election ballot whether an ocean safety commission should be established. Those are actually the only updates I have right now. If anyone has any questions for council member, I can take them back.
Thank you, Kelly. Board members, any quick questions? Okay, virtually, board members, any quick questions? Okay, back here, community, any questions for council members' office? Okay, virtually, any questions for council members' office? Thank you, Kelly. But same thing, if you have any information, as I shared with Kevin, if you have any information regarding the Achieve Zero situation, the 123 Mango Street, because I know you worked with them previously as well, you know, so if you have any contact information that you can share with Kevin or, you know, us to just find out what is going on with that area.
Okay. I don't actually know what is going on, but if Kevin would like me to reach out to Nikki, the former executive director of Achieve Zero, because technically, she's the one that would need to work with HPD to do the trespass for the illegal tenants. I can, I can take care of that. That's not a problem.
Okay, okay. So yeah, keep in touch as was, as Kevin, then that'd be great.
No problem.
Okay, thank you. Okay, having said that, we're gonna move on to our next, for governor's office. Rose Marie is not here tonight. She's actually on a, traveling on a business trip. So moving on to Senator Dela Cruz's office. Allurin?
Hi, sorry, I'm filling in for Allure. I'm Jacob Lee from the Ways and Means Committee. Hi, can you hear me, Chair?
Yes. Hi, Jacob. Thank you.
Hi. So I'm just gonna make some quick highlights from our newsletter, just, it's about our session. So we're grateful that we successfully prioritized critical initiatives through initiatives such as the career and technical education, the Maui Fire funding, and a lot of supporting our local farmers while also fulfilling commitments made at the start of the session. In addition to supporting and addressing three new major challenges without painful cuts to existing state programs, wildfires, the Maui wildfire hazard paid for state workers, and comprehensive funding package to address power security to protect both our residential homes and agriculture productions. Bills I want to highlight for the Maui one is HP 2404, generational tax relief, SB 582, which is expenses that are put into housing, assistance for individuals affected by Maui wildfire, claims that are put into the One Ohana Trust. And then going to the bio that Brian has mentioned, so this bill was talking about, I mean, this bill was about the CRB, you know, programs to fight, to combat invasive species such as CRB, fire ant, brown snake, rose, parakeet, two-lined beetle bug, and feral chickens. And then for, we added 44 new positions as well as that in that bill to, for inspections. And then lastly, SB 572, which provides the with approval of the governor to declare power security emergency, such as for the CRB. And then if there's any questions, you can follow up with the newsletter or email us or call us. Mahalo.
Thank you, Jacob. I just want to make sure I heard correctly. I'm trying to not smile because, but you did mention that the, that grant money includes feral chickens. Did I hear feral chickens?
Yes, you did. You did. Correct.
I'm holding, I'm containing myself. They're all over the place. Thank you. Thank you very much for that update, because Brian didn't mention feral chickens. Landmark legislation, that 20 million. Thank you very much. Okay, board members, any questions? Hey, board members, virtually, Erin or Dean, questions for Donovan's office, Senator's office?
Hi, Adam, Chair. Oh, sorry. Go ahead, Dean.
Go, 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 go. You first.
Okay, okay. Thank you, Dean. Question, Jacob. Was there any funding for DLNR? That seemed to be something that, I know there was a big recruiting class last year, and then there was tentatively a recruiting class, but I've heard that they haven't been able to be hired because there was not enough funding for another, you know, 40 officers.
That is, that is correct. But I'm, there may be more information. I don't have it all with me right now. But if you want, I can relay the message and we can get some back to you.
Right. Because I heard part of it, there's that, the green bill, was that they would help fund some, you know, Department of Land and Natural Resources, but that didn't pass, correct?
Yes.
So then what, you know, I guess, is there a plan to help fund DLNR, if you could?
As of right now, I don't have that information. I can, I can come back. I can relay the message for you.
Okay, appreciate it. Thank you.
I'm sorry about that. Thank you.
Thank you, Jacob. Yeah, send us that info update. Thank you.
Yes.
And then Dean?
Yeah, just, I was gonna be funny about Jacob. This is regarding SB 3222, the transfer of enforcement authority from PUC to NVSO DOT. If the means and ways can come upon extra money to afford them to hire new enforcement officers for that transfer of authority. Currently, they have officers that do conduct inspections for tractor trailers, the rigs, buses, and stuff like that. But that's at a station. I'm talking about creating a new enforcement detail to have mobility. I had sent something to the senator earlier, and I'll send it again to him just to bring him up to speed what I'm talking about. But with the transfer coming up, I was wondering if they have provided any funds. I didn't see any funding allowed. Yeah, they transferred the authority, but no funding.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, no, at the time, I don't, I don't, I don't think they did. But I'm sorry, I hate to do this to you too, but I don't have much information. I know there wasn't a lot of funding to a lot of departments, because of the wildfires too. So we kind of did a lot of cuts. But as I said, I'm not, I don't have a lot of information on it, but I can get back to you as well.
Yeah, thank you.
No problem, Jacob. Thank you, Dean. Any other question?
Can I, can I make one, Stephen? I'm sorry. I'm a, I'm a mailman there too, and I just love what you guys are doing for the community of Wahihua. And everything's looking great, and I love, I'm just very excited for what you guys are doing. So much respect to you and the board.
Oh, thank you so much. I appreciate your support. Everyone, yeah, we have a great community. So everyone work, everyone's trying to work together. Yeah.
It's beautiful.
Thank you. Okay, so I'm gonna go on to Representative Peruso. I don't see her here, but is she on virtually? Representative Peruso? No. Hi, Representative Peruso. We'll come back to you. We will come back to you if you get on. Okay, we'll come back to you. So we have time to do board business, and then we're gonna wrap out. So, and we'll check back with Representative, if she's available. So we are on item eight, board business approval of minutes, the regular meeting of Monday, March 18, 2024. Do you have a motion to accept the minutes as stated?
So move.
Oh, thank you, Dean. Do you have a second?
Second.
Okay, Michelle? Any? Any discussion? Nope. Okay, then we can do the vote to accept. All in favor to accept the Monday, March 18, 2024 minutes as is, all in favor?
Aye.
Any, any opposed? Okay, thank you very much. At this time, we're gonna skip items B and C. We're gonna move down to our announcements. Three quick announcements. I'll do the first. Vice Chair Sylvia will do the second, and then Michelle will do the third. Board meeting, the next Wahihua Whitmore Village Neighborhood Board meeting is scheduled to be on Monday, June 17, 2024, at 7:00 PM here at the Wahihua District Park's Haleiwa Meeting Room. Please check the Neighborhood Commission Office website for updates.
B, the city's People's Open Market, Tuesdays from 10:00 to 11:00, Wahihua District Park. Note, People's Open Market is temporarily being held in the parking lot on Kilani Avenue by the swimming pool. C, information contacts. City Street Pothole Hotline, call 768-7777. State Street Pothole Hotline, 536-7852. There should be 808s in front of these.
Sorry.
Okay. Heart-Maintained Road Pothole Hotline, 808-566-2299. City Refuge Inspector, Inspector's Office, 808-768-5220. Okay. Schofield Noise Complaints, 808-656-3487. Email is USAGHI.com/REL@gmail.com or 25th Infantry Public Affairs Office at 808-655-4756, or email USAGHI.com/REL@gmail.com.
And that one, I remembered the 808 on that one. Oh, okay, Representative, we can grab you on if you have a few minutes. Oh, we don't have sound. Is your volume on? Hi, Representative, is your volume on?
Unmute your mic. It's showing muted.
Okay, can she, oh. Hi, Representative, can you, do you want to put something in the chat, or can you unmute? Oh, you, no, unmute. Can you check your microphone setting? I'm so sorry, we can't hear you. Did you want to type something in the chatroom that we can announce for you?
Never mind, she said.
Oh, never mind.
Hey, wait, wait. It's not working.
Need, okay, got it. No need. We got it. All right. Thank you very much. Thank you for the presentation tonight to recognize both our mighty mule valedictorians and our basketball team, WA Division One champions. So thank you very much. Okay, and having said that, everyone, we, this meeting is adjourned. Mahalo.
Good night. Aloha.